County Planning Commission, if you'll all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and Ms. Opeland, if you'll share the TV coverage announcement for us, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria, and Orchid areas. Rebroadcasts of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Blau.
Here.
Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
And Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Brown is going to be absent today, and we are still waiting on Commissioner Valencia. I think he's going to be late.
And we may take a break to accommodate a little extra time because of the road closure problems that he's probably facing. With that, we'll ask Ms. Black about our agenda status report.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, good morning. We have seven items on our agenda today, six of which are permit items, and we're ready to move forward with all six of those and with our state water briefing as well.
Okay, and shall we discuss the projection report? And if we make any substantive changes, we'll take some time with Commissioner Valencia. So why don't we go ahead and begin that discussion?
Okay, fine. So, Mr. Chair, obviously, we have the hearing today, which looks to be a fairly full day for the Commission. We'll be meeting again next Tuesday in Santa Maria to hear the Lompoc Wind Energy Project, and you should have gotten your materials for that, or we'll be getting that today. The Board's not meeting next week, so we can use their chambers. October 1st, the next day, will be a hearing in Santa Barbara, and we have several permit items on and a workshop that I added relatively late on solar energy. This is a workshop we conducted with Montecito, and they were fairly receptive to some of the ideas, so we thought we should bring it to your Commission as well. Then you will be meeting next, again, on Friday, October 17th. I know we bounced back and forth between Friday and Monday, but I think we've polled the Commission. It seems as if all of the Commissioners are available on Friday, the 17th, and that date worked better. That will primarily be for the housing element-focused rezone projects, and that will also be conducted in Santa Maria. We have canceled the hearing of October 22nd. I know your agenda still says potentially canceled, but that has been canceled, and October 29th is a fifth Wednesday, and so we're not intending to have hearings that day either. So your next meeting will be November 5th. At the moment, November 5th only shows one item on, but I have a list of projects that staff is intending to put on your hearings in November and December, so I'm confident that that day will be a productive day for the Commission to meet.
Would it be prudent to have a heads-up of what you may be considering for that date?
Sure. See if I brought that in with me. And I'm sorry, we just haven't gotten all of these projects yet on the projection report. So, November 5th, we are looking to have the B&amp;G Office Trailer Appeal on, and that is an appeal of an office trailer, I believe, in Carpentaria. The Massar Barn Appeal is also proposed to be on that day, and I believe that's in the first district. I'm not positive about that one. The Edgecombe Lot Line Adjustment is proposed to be on that day, and the Conditional Use Permit for Laurel Springs Resort, which is up in the third district. So those are the items that we're looking at so far, up off the pass.
All righty.
So, anyway, I just didn't want the Commission to feel as if we were going to only have a hearing with one item on it. On November 12th, we'll be meeting again in Santa Maria, and there are a number of items on that date, that day already, for your consideration, including Providence Landing, an appeal, a parcel map, and then the initiation of the Hunter La Parísima Resort General Plan Amendment. We won't be meeting on November 26th, as that's the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving. So the next regular meeting of the Commission will be December 3rd, and so far, we have a couple of Isla Vista projects on that day and your holiday lunch, and I think there may be another project that will make its way to your agenda as well for that day. And then December 10th would be your last regularly scheduled meeting of the year, and we have the Rosemary Farms pre-application, essentially Planning Commission consult on that day so far, and I believe we will also be having the NRCS Permit Coordination, Conditional Use Permit, on that day as well. So I think you'll have full hearings, but there are several that won't, you know, that will be canceled either due to holidays or that October meeting.
Okay. Please refresh my memory. You spoke at our last meeting about a furlough program.
Yes.
And can you share with me again where that falls and how that falls?
Sure. Mr. Chair, the furlough is the last two weeks in December, the last, the week that contains Christmas and the week that contains New Year's. So we will not be having hearings, obviously, on December 24th or 31st, because we'll be on furlough, and we typically wouldn't have a hearing those days, anyway. It does make it a bit challenging to prepare for the beginning of the year, and so I think at this point in time, we are planning on canceling January 7th and 14th, just not conducting hearings those two days, and commencing the Planning Commission's year on January 21st. Otherwise, we have to have things noticed and staff reports prepared and to your Commission before we go on furlough to really conduct those first two hearings. So that's our plan at the moment. I'll let you know if that changes, and I think I indicated to the Commission that we'll be bringing a calendar to your Commission and all of the Commissions and Boards in the next month or so for the upcoming 2009 year.
Okay. Just for the benefit of Commissioner Valencia, wanted to give you a chance just to take a look at the projection report if you felt you wanted to take advantage of the time here. Otherwise, I'm looking, we'll just continue into.
Please continue, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just point out one hearing date that, to alert Commissioner Valencia, too. We did, I think, decide to have the Housing Element Hearing on the Friday, October 17th. We had bounced between the Friday and the Monday, so I believe it's, we've conquered that Friday as the best day. Other than that, I think everything is pretty much the same as we've talked about.
Okay. Are there any additional questions? Commissioner Cooney?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. And, Ms. Black, I just have a concern at the information you just shared. I'm sure Mr. Baker and you've had a chance to discuss it, but what you're proposing is substantially five- or six-week time within which the Commission would not meet at all. And I just, it strikes me that's going to be inconvenient for some in the community who, particularly with regard to our general plan projects, and others may be anxious to get their matters going. So I'm uncomfortable, frankly, agreeing at this point, though I understand the dilemma. I hope we can shoot for an earlier date in January at least, recognizing that the end of the year would be impossible.
Commissioner Blau.
I kind of second those comments, and it wouldn't bother me if we had meetings, for example, on like the 16th, 17th, a couple of days in a row, if you get jammed up. And, you know, I mean, I appreciate not doing it the 7th and the 14th also, but if you need to put two, three hearings together, back-to-back, in order to accommodate the long delay, it would be great. My other comment is, in looking at this October 1st meeting, it looks to me like it's a lot shorter than two and three-quarter hours, but so I'd appreciate making arrangements that I can do that one in Santa Maria remotely. I mean, we had some problems last time, but I don't think there's going to be much discussion on these items, to tell you the truth. It's more or less just listening and voting on a couple of them, so save the county a little money.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let you know what we're doing, to try and assess the needs for the hearings. We are, I have been speaking with the Deputy Directors of the Divisions that normally put items on your Commission, and trying to get a real handle on projects that would naturally flow to agendas either late in December or early in January, and I really appreciate the Commission's offer to meet on odd days or whatever we need to do to accommodate. So far, it's hard to assess at this moment, and that's why I said we hadn't made a decision yet, but we are obviously aware of the needs of people, and canceling meetings five weeks in a row is a bit tough sometimes.
Yeah, I suppose it would be helpful, I give Commissioner Valencia the opportunity as well. I, too, would endorse what Commissioner Blau said, that if there are some needs in those areas, that I, too, would want to, you know, make that available or participate under those circumstances. And I know it probably would be good to communicate with Commissioner Brown, make that available for her as well. Are you poised and ready, or, otherwise, I'm going to go to, this is a time in our meeting for public comment on items that are not on today's agenda. Before I go to that, I will give the admonition, if you possess a cellphone, would you please turn it to silent and/or vibrate, and I will do the same so that I don't get caught? And if you do intend to speak in public comment, you will need to bring a speaker slip forward and hand it to Commissioner Blau here, and he will forward it to me. And I have one slip at this point, and we will stay with our three-minute allocation. Mr. Thorndike, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Commission. I'm here to say good morning to you and my good neighbors in Toro Canyon and to all of my family and friends in Oregon and California. Greetings. I'm John Thorndike, the owner, Vendi and/or Vendor, they tell me I'm that, too, of all oil, gas, water, mineral rights directly below the Los Padres National Forest, and also abutting the Montecito Water District. They're 42 acres, abutting mine. They carry the Dalton Tunnel there. It is my intention to sell options to all oil rights, to any and all of this one half-mile of property, insofar as the California Attorney General's Office in Los Angeles appears unwilling to honor a court decision of 18-year standing here in the California Court in Santa Barbara, where I won a lawsuit that gave me the right to meter my water. Any government entity or private property interested in an option, please contact me at Thorndike Matilah Properties at 1073-1300 Toro Canyon Road, Box 9, 1801, Santa Barbara, 93190, 1801. Any questions from everybody here?
Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Thorndike, you'll recall, I mentioned this last year, when you stray over the line between sharing information with the public and marketing your property, I get concerned that we're doing something we shouldn't be doing in public comment. So you're entitled to address the Commission on any subject, including your property in Toro Canyon, but I'd appreciate it, I think the Commission would appreciate it, if you'd refrain from making overt marketing attempts using our public hearing as the basis for your own personal benefit.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Cooney, and I will take that under advisement, as they tell me in the legal beagle department. Thank you very much. Any other questions or advice?
At this juncture, I don't see any additional comments. Thank you very much, and we will move on. I don't believe I've received any other speaker slip for public comment, and I'm looking out at the audience for hands, and I don't see any, so I will bring it back to the Commission. And we will, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any informational reports they would like to share at this time. Seeing none, I will move to Planning and Development Divisional Briefings. Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, we don't have any general briefings. We do have the state water briefing on your agenda today, at the end of the agenda.
Okay. At this point, we have in our packet the minutes of the September 10th to, oh, well, John's briefing comes right after the minutes. I'm following my protocol here. Okay. We have the minutes of September 10th, 2008, to be considered. They were part of your packet. I'll entertain a motion to accept or amend the minutes as presented. Commissioner Cooney?
Mr. Chair, I would move to adopt the minutes as circulated with one change I would suggest. It appears on page four, these are comments made by Commissioners in response to the proposed Orchid Creek Village pre-application, and under my comments, the very last paragraph, just to make it, make the comment make sense, I would add the words, where it says included in this project, it's a little ambiguous, I would say the previously approved project, as we have had this project before us and we approved an entirely different project.
Okay, we have that amendment. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, under my comments on the, it'd be page three, the traffic signal at the bottom may be good for the community. It's something that a traffic study would have to take a look at. And my last comment was, the intent there was for Mr. Mattson to take a look at this site and how it would relate to the RENA numbers, not so much that it'd be, not part of the Housing Element, EIR, I think, is the issue there. So with that, I'll make a sec, I'll second the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Any discussion for clarity purposes? Ms. Black, do you understand what the amendments are? And they?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any further discussion on the minutes of September 10th? Seeing none, Ms. Opeland, would you take the roll?
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries 4-0.
Okay, and at this point, I see Director Baker is here. We'll have a report.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, two items that have been approved by the Board since you last met. Last week, they approved the TDR ordinance that you forwarded to them with your recommendations as it was received. Yesterday, after a fairly lengthy hearing, they approved the Diamond Rock Project. I want to just announce, not for you necessarily, although you're certainly welcome to tune in, but on the 13th, we're going to have a special meeting of the Board on the Santa Barbara Ranch. It is on a Monday, and that's the only subject that will be on the agenda. October 13th, did I say September? It's October, anyway, 13th. And I had noted that we also, the Board approved last week, and second reading yesterday, no, first reading, only reading, solid waste thresholds that were approved last week. I want to go back to the furlough for a minute also, because I just think, you guys know what's going on, but I want to make sure that anybody that's watching understands that the county offices, Planning and Development, which includes Building and Safety, will be closed from December 22nd through January 2nd. A couple of those would be holidays, but the other four days of each of those weeks, we are going to be closed. We're going to make sure that we notify as well as possible anybody that has to have stuff that's done before the end of the year on the timing that they need to get it in so that it gets approved. We often have run on things at the end of the year for primarily tax purposes, that things need to get done, so we're going to be notifying essentially all of our applicants that, and customers that are out there expecting building inspections or whatever it may be, that we will not be doing business for those two weeks. It's significant impact in terms of the services, but it's also a significant impact in terms of our budget, and that's the reason that the furlough is being done. So just using this time to announce it, I'll probably come back and do it a couple of more times, just to make sure that people hear it.
Okay. Any questions for Director Baker? Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Baker, I just had three other items on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for yesterday. Perhaps they continued and didn't discuss them. They were all matters of concern to the Commission. The Old Town Orchid Traffic Circulation and Parking Study, Los Alamos Community Plan, and then there was a fee waiver request on an appeal, the house.
You're absolutely right, and I was, the first one I was thinking as being public works, but it actually was under our direction. The Old Town Orchid Traffic Study was approved, as submitted. The second one that you mentioned, the Los Alamos, was approved, or to initiate the study and proceed with the EIR process. And the last one was the house sale, which they did not approve, the waiver, and the statement being made that there was concern that in doing that, although it was, you know, they recognized the charitable giving that was being done by the house sales for the family, it just opened the door for a number of other people to be coming forward and saying, I should be getting the same kind of a benefit for waiving of fees. And you should be aware that when we waive fees, it's required that they be backfilled, and so that would mean that they start into the General Fund Strategic Reserve in order to make up those payments, and the Board's not willing to go there at this point.
Commissioner Cooney, did you have any other additional?
No, thank you very much, Mr. Baker.
I had one, and it may be that I'm just jumping in in front of Commissioner Blau, but in the discussion of the Los Alamos Plan, there appeared to be further discussion of a differing approach or option available to the property holder outside the planned boundary, and I was wondering if there was something different there that was presented or a different decision that was rendered.
Mr. Chairman, really no different decision rendered, the decision was to not include the Commons Project in there. I mean, there's a sliver of their project that's within the urban boundary, and that gets included in the plan, but the remainder of it just not to be included, stating that it's really a separate project and should be separate, subject to separate sequel review if the owner, operator, owner of the property wants to proceed in that manner.
Okay. Commissioner Blau?
That was one of my two questions. I believe they also approved the prohibition against any GP amendments while the community plan is being developed, but does that, and my question is, is that only within the scope of the community plan? So this property that's outside the community plan is not prohibited from making an application to do their project? Did I understand that correctly?
That, Commissioner Blau, that is exactly correct. It's only those properties within the boundaries that are subject to the two-year prohibition.
So they could come in, I'm wondering how that works with, well, I guess it, the fact that they've got some of the property within the community plan, some without the community plan, I just wonder how that works. But I'm glad they're not prohibited from bringing an application forward, because I think there was actually, as I read the Board yesterday, there was perhaps some appreciation to make look at the project, especially when we hear from Mr. Mattson on the RENA numbers, as it may affect them kind of substantially, so. My second, you answered the question, I think.
You're absolutely correct. There was some interest in looking at the property by some of the Board members, but the final result was that we're going to stick with the plan as it was, as you saw.
Yeah, and my second question was, and I saw Chairman Carver Hall get a little excited about the appellate and applicant not understanding their time constraints or giving notice on time constraints, and I wonder, I don't think we have the same problem here sometimes, where the chairman here would ask the applicant or ask, how long is your presentation going to be? And I'm wondering if we ought to have some procedure where you notify them in advance how much time they have to make their presentation, they agree to it, so that it makes it easier for the chair to manage the time and give proper notice.
Commissioner Blau, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was tempted to say something, but I decided to let it go yesterday. First of all, the applicant, let me back up. The way that the Board does it, they have a very specific, we develop times, and we talk to the applicant beforehand about those times that they will have, that the planner making the presentation will have, that the applicant will have, that the appellate will have, then that the, and the rebuttals, all of that stuff is very much timed. The only thing that you can't really time is the public comment on it. And Chairman Carver Hall is very good about sticking with those times. We gave him that sheet, I gave it to him over a week ago. What we didn't do was give the sheet itself to the, in this case, it was the appellate. We talked to them long before that sheet was even prepared about the time that was going to be allotted, or talked with them about how much they needed. We initially had started, in that case, with 20 minutes. We expanded it to 30 based on their comments. That was told to them weeks in advance, but we didn't give them the sheet. Now Supervisor Carver Hall, when Gary Kaiser said we didn't give him the sheet, he interpreted that to mean we hadn't told them what their time was until yesterday, the day before, and that was not correct.
That didn't surprise me based on the competency of the appellate's presentation, but my real concern is, is just managing this time and maybe getting applicants and appellants understanding that there are time constraints, that if, we might not want to do the same thing at this Commission, so that people know that when they come to a public hearing, there's an agreed time for their presentation, they can't exceed it, and I think it makes it a lot easier for the chair to run the meeting. Mr. Chair, I think you could pop in and make comment if you like.
Commissioner Blau, we have suggested that to the Commission previously, that they might want to follow something like that, and not, a decision not made to do that kind of a thing, but we're prepared to give people that kind of a sheet, if you will, if the Commission so desires.
Mr. Chair, and I hate to speak for you and for our previous chair, but we, on occasion... but we, on occasion, where we knew a project was large and complex, would talk about timeframes. But we don't do that, we haven't made that a practice on every single case. And the board really makes it a practice on appeals, I think.
On appeals, on every one, we give them those sheets.
Just as a personal aside on how I've chosen to do it, I generally have a discussion with Ms. Black about what we're looking at. And I will admit that as I compare myself with my counterpart on the Board of Supervisors, I might be considered somewhat casual. But mostly, that has been in the discussion with people coming in advance. And I believe that some of that, as I read the admonition here in our minutes, is subject to the discretion of the chair. I appreciate where it's going. I think I've, at least for myself, have tried within some limits to manage going in. And then I do tend to feel the audiences were going. And I would work to preserve that structure, at least for the balance of my term. But I think you others would be, have the opportunity perhaps to restructure that in the future.
My other comment would be, just like Chair Carver Hall did yesterday, and extending the time additional five minutes. You would, the issue is not to try and hold up to that, but the issue is to put the applicant or the appellate on notice that there are time constraints, get them to commit early what those constraints are. And obviously, if the chair recognizes that there's a reason for it to extend it, you have the option. But it just seems to me, it's polite to give the applicant or the appellate notices to how much time they have to make their presentation. And so if for some reason they ramble on or they're not acting correctly, it's a little easier for the chair to cut them off, is my point.
I'm 100% in agreement with you on that.
So I would propose a week, so maybe sort of try and do that in the future.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I have thought about these matters during the year in which I occupied the chair. And I would just observe that hearings before this commission have been less stringent with regard to time limits generally in the time I've been on the commission. And I believe that's appropriate. We are the court of at least first resort, sometimes last resort. And I believe the public ought to feel comfortable in making presentations to the commission without being so concerned about time limits that they neglect to make the points they need to make for us to make the best decision. And generally, I would say that's been the case. Once in a while, a presentation will wander and repeat itself. And then it's appropriate, of course, for the chair to step in and remind the applicant that we do have to move on. But I'd say that cases are rare where we've had that, and it's much more common that we get a full and fair hearing. If it gets to be the case that our meetings are all running over and the commission's ineffective for any reason as a result of that, I would advocate some kind of stricter time limits. But at least up to now, I think it's operated very well. And the comments I have received personally from the community is that the commission is very fair in terms of its hearing times. And that results, I think, from less structure, at least less open and direct structure, perhaps more subtle in the manner that the chair this year has conducted hearings. So I guess I'm an advocate for allowing extra testimony rather than erring on the side of cutting something off that might be important.
All well said, and let's take notice. And any other additional comments or questions for Director Baker? Seeing none, I think it's about time we began our regular agenda. And Ms. Opeland, if you'll read the first item, let me ask apropos of nothing. Do we need any setup time for this presentation? No? Okay. Then let's move right in. Ms. Opeland, if you'll read the item into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Lynn Simonsen to consider the following cases on property located in the DR zone. A 08 TRM 1, also TM 14740, application filed on January 9th, 2008. B 08 AMD 5, application filed May 21st, 2008. And to accept 06 NGD 12 as adequate environmental review pursuant to Section 15162 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Okay, thank you very much. At this juncture, we do have a staff report. Shall we begin with that? Good morning and welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm following up from the hearing of September 10th. I don't have a formal PowerPoint presentation for this. I'm just going to kind of summarize the points in my two memorandums to you. The first that I prepared last week. One was, there was an issue raised by the senior, Mr. Don Simonsen, regarding whether or not Mr. Lynn Simonsen had the authority to proceed on the project, the Hummel Village Phase 2 project. Called in some questions to that. Since that time, the county council's office has reviewed the operating agreement by Hummel Village Phase 2, as well as other court documents obtained by Judge Cantor's office. And they've determined that, yes, Mr. Lynn Simonsen does have the authority and the right to proceed with his project. Secondarily, there were some other issues raised, or a question by Mr. Blau about the homeowners association and the service and management agreement that was proposed. And specifically, how maybe a manager would have, would be delegated the authority to somewhat police some of the residences within the HOA with regards if there were any disputes or whatever. The county council's office has reviewed the agreement. They've spoken with the Department of Real Estate on this issue. The Department of Real Estate is aware of the arrangements that Mr. Simonsen is seeking, and they've been supportive of it in other HOA situations, particularly with senior housing developments. So apparently, this issue is something that's kind of come about with just regards to senior housing developments in the last couple of years. Lastly, I prepared a memo which I just gave to you today. It's recommending a condition. Simply put, your commission is asked to support, or we're recommending support, of an amendment to a development plan. The way we would effectuate that is through a zoning clearance. If you recall, this project is already nearly completed and built. The homes are built, the grading's been done, and so we've already issued zoning clearances. But the zoning clearances that we've issued state that they're for single-family homes, which can include two-bedroom suites. The condition that we're recommending would require the applicant to submit a revised zoning clearance. This is not a big endeavor for staff to review and approve if you are approving of the project, at which time the zoning clearance would just effectuate the change from the single-family residence, as it's currently spelled out, to allow for, you know, the four-unit condos that are allowed in each single-family home. This concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. At this juncture, I'll ask my colleagues if they, with regard to this project, have any ex parte conversations or site visits they wish to report at this time? Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did talk to Mr. Zorovich concerning the project and have received some further information.
Okay.
Just a site visit.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know whether or not there is an applicant presentation to be had at this time. It appears like no. Then if the commissioners have any additional questions they want to ask of staff before we have public comment? Seeing none, if you are speaking to item one, of which I presently have one speaker, yeah, one speaker, Mr. Donald A. Simonsen. Is he here or is he, if he's in Santa Maria, can we, are we able to hear him there? Good morning, Mr. Simonsen.
Good morning, commissioners.
Please bring the microphone close to you so we can hear you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Donald A. Simonsen. I wrote you a letter dated 9/1608, and it had four points in it. One point is that as a condominium project, that large two-story house that's in the middle of the area is absolutely unacceptable. It should be removed, demolished, and that area should be made into a open landscape and parking for the area. It's just totally out of place. And point number two was that in the agreement that Lynn Simonsen drew up, it said that the project would be, was hoped to be, 12 acres. Well, Phase 1 is 5 acres, Phase 2 is 5 acres, so that means there's 2 acres in between. And there's a 75 by 628-foot piece of property owned by a lady. And it says that, in the agreement, it said that she should be contacted with the thought in mind of purchasing her property. Well, that's a very misguided statement. I think that the project should be withheld. I think that the two-story house should be removed. And I think the property between the two should be made, should be purchased, so that the project is one project. Otherwise, I think it's very poor planning. In fact, if you looked at it, you can't, no one could even imagine it otherwise. Thank you very much. I'll answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any commissioner questions? Okay, seeing none, that was last speaker. I will make the opportunity available if the applicant wishes to speak at this juncture. Otherwise, I will, I can bring it back to the commission. Okay, then we will bring it back to the commission for any additional questions or issues to be raised. Commissioner Cooney.
I would just ask Mr. Zorovich about the two-story house. I'm not having any clear recollection of it from my site visit a couple of months ago, but what is the situation with regard to that house? Is it occupied and legal with the proposal? Is removal part of the project?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney. There is a two-story, single-family home. It was there actually before your commission even voted on the original development plan for this project. If you call or maybe not, it included a parcel map, which split the parcel from the existing home and created a new parcel, which these new condo, these new single-family homes are located on. It is, like I said, it's existing, it's legal. There is no requirement for it to be removed or to be demolished as part of this project or the original project.
Okay, are there any additional questions? Okay, I think at this point, this project, I believe, is a, help me out, is this a fourth district project? Yes. Commissioner Valencia, do you wish to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if there aren't any further questions, I'd like to move forward with this project.
Okay, I don't see any questions at this time, so I'll entertain a motion.
All right. With that, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQA findings, and that we determine that previous negative declaration, 06 NGD 0 string 12, is adequate for review of the project pursuant to SEQA Section 15162, Attachment C, and that we approve the tentative tract map 14740 and the amendment to the final development plan number 04DVP 0 string 41, subject to the conditions of approval in Attachment B. The amended final development shall replace and supersede 04DVP 0 string 41 and all changes at this meeting.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. I'll entertain a second.
I'll second. I just want to make sure that the maker of the motion intended to include the new condition 59?
It did, thank you, Mr. Chair. I said, oh.
I understood you made a general statement. I just want to be sure that one was included as well.
Tried to grab everything I could. Commissioner Cooney.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, this one, I have to be honest, causes me a little bit of a problem, a little bit of a concern. I'm happy to find out that the DRE has addressed the issue of an uncooperative or dysfunctioning person in there, because it is age-based. But I guess what, I have a real problem with this as a five-unit condominium project. Having been involved with senior projects and been involved with condos, I just have a real tough time wrestling with how this is going to be adequately managed. Only having five units, it's difficult for you to be able to find a professional manager that does condo associations. And in this day and age, it's pretty darn difficult to operate one without them. I mean, the laws are so difficult to deal with and compliance with the DRE and the other reporting forms. I see great potential problems having this almost be a commune as opposed to really a true condo project where there's a little more separation in the unit. I mean, basically, you've got a bedroom, two bedrooms and a small kitchenette, and then you have a common area, common halls, the garage is common. I just having great difficulty being able to support this. If it were a bigger project, I think I could do it. But I just, I think this is a disaster waiting to happen, to tell you the truth. So I'm having real difficulty trying to get behind it, which is unusual for me, being the developer's advocate. But I'm curious to see how the commissioners feel about that issue.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I've visited the, on several occasions, I've visited the project with the Simonsens at one time and been by myself. I've driven through the project, and it is in excellent condition. It is very clean. I never did, I see a vehicle parked outside the regular parking spaces. Everything was, I walked around inside the development when the people were in there, and everything was very nice and quiet, mellow. Obviously, that's because it's well-managed. And so I don't, Mr. Simonsen is here in the audience, perhaps he can speak to that. But he doesn't anticipate any problems from what he said to me.
If I could respond to Mr. Commissioner Valencia's concerns. Commissioner Valencia, I'm not concerned, if this were a rental project, I have no concerns whatsoever. Because we're, it's a completely different issue. We're talking about Mr. Simonsen managing the rental project as opposed to creating a condominium association where, once the five people purchase the units, Mr. Simonsen doesn't really have any more control. He, I mean, I know of no association that DRE is going to approve where the five owners don't sit down and make all the future decisions about where the management's going to come and how the condos run. I think the project's a terrific project as a rental project. I just have great concern about doing a condo project, having the units go for sale, and how those five owners are going to operate that into the future. So that's my dilemma.
Could we let Mr. Simonsen speak to this?
What I, I'm a little reluctant to want to go there, because we're in the deliberative phase, and I'll pull my colleagues after. Commissioner Cooney would like to speak to it, and perhaps I would as well. So I'll make that available at that point. Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really, I think Commissioner Blau is raising an issue beyond the project approval stage. I think he's talking about the practicalities of the operations of this development once it's built, once it's occupied, and the units are sold to individuals. And I'm not without concern that this experiment may prove to be problematic in the future. However, I stop short of opposing the project on that basis because I, number one, agree with the applicant that senior housing is an increasing need in our community, in the North County as well as the South. And I think he's trying to find the right solution to have more housing available in a situation which is desired by our aging population. I'm not sure it's going to work. There may be problems with management, but I think he's entitled to give it a try. And we have other means of addressing zoning violations and issues that could arise if it's unsuccessful. But I'd like to give the applicant the opportunity to try this method as opposed to the method occupied in Phase 1, which is basically rental. So I would support the project as presented and kind of hold my breath as I do so.
For myself, as someone who would be For myself, as someone who would be looking for this project unfortunately elsewhere, I actually look at the homeowners' association structure that he proposes as potentially valuable, from the standpoint of a family member. It does not go without saying, your points are valid. I argue they are. I also, but I also feel this is a product type that could be well-served by the structure that they propose. And I suppose I would be approaching it the same way Commissioner Cooney just articulated. Had this project been where family members were, I'd already be there. And this is an enhancement that I think, because of the very problem you described, having that availability and also seeing the DRE make a move and support, I needed to see that. That made me feel better. DRE doesn't change things very often, doesn't make moves or be flexible very often either. So to see that type of participation is an enhancement that strengthens the concern you're raising for me. So I would be in support of the project as presented. Now, would my colleagues benefit from hearing from the applicant at this point?
I don't need to, to tell you the truth. I'm probably going to abstain from voting. I kind of, I want to agree. I don't want to, I can't say that I'm not in favor of the project, I just can't support it. So I guess if you can't do either one, you just abstain. I actually wishing the success, I hope it works. I'm just pretty certain that it's not going to.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia.
Mr. Chair, if you're not interested in listening to what Mr. Simonson has to say with respect to something that was the major issue, that's fine with me. I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney.
Well, I just agree with the Chair that we've moved past that phase. I think we're ready to vote. I certainly feel that the applicant is capable of managing the project and is, in any event, accepting responsibility for it. So the county will look to the applicant in the event there are problems down the line.
Okay. At this moment, we have a motion and a second. I see no light, so there is no further discussion. So Ms. Opeland, if you'll do the roll.
Commissioner Blau? Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries three, zero, one.
Okay. We will take a five, a five to 10-minute break to set up for the next item. And we'll go off now. Opeland, if you will read our next item into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Mike Stoker, applicant and property owner, to consider the following. A, 06 GPA 9, application filed May 12, 2006. B, 07 RZN 9, application filed on May 21, 2007. C, 07 TRM 19, application filed on May 21, 2007. D, 07 DVP 16, application filed on May 21, 2007, and to approve the mitigated negative declaration 0A NGD 11 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Eadie, do you have a staff report?
Good morning, Chairman Jackson, fellow Commissioners. Do not have a formal presentation today. If you recall, on our previous meeting, September 10th, the Commission requested a continuance so staff could prepare findings for denial of the project. Those findings have been prepared and included in a memo to the Commission dated today's date. I also included a newly worded resolution. Currently, the Development Code requires that the Planning Commission make a formal recommendation in writing to the Board regarding all proposed rezones. So the resolution now recommends denial of that rezone, consistent with the findings requested by the Planning Commission.
Okay. I don't see an applicant or an applicant representative here. Are there any site visit or ex parte disclosures to put forth this point? Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, after the meeting, I received a call from Mr. Stoker indicating that if I had a change of heart concerning the project. I told him I did not. My decision still stands. And he indicated that he was willing to drop some units. I told him that I couldn't make a decision, that we make decisions at the Planning Commission meeting. But I listened to him and I told him he was entitled to resubmit if he liked, but he said no, and that was all.
I too had a telephone conversation with Mr. Stoker subsequent to the meeting. I think it was more a recap of what took place at the meeting. I don't think there was anything in particular that was new, other than perhaps a clarification of an issue with regard to excavation on the site previously. And I'm, I have a feeling there may be some discussion of that coming forward. If not, I'll, I'll try and reconcile what he said. Commissioner Valencia.
Mr. Chair, I failed to say also that I had a call from some citizens concerned about the project, and I discussed the process with them at length yesterday.
I too had a similar discussion with, I believe she's in the audience, with regard to what our approach or what our scheduled approach was with regard to this meeting. Seeing no others at this point, if there are no questions specifically of Mr. Eadie's immediate report, we'll take public comment at this point and move forward. I see that we have, for this item, I have two speakers. Lori Chimura and?
Wrong item.
That's the next item?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the speaker, I have a question.
I'm sorry. I'm out of order. Okay. I don't see any speakers at this point for this item, so I'll bring it back to the Commission for any questions or comments. I see Commissioner Blau, your light is lit.
Yeah, I'd called Mr. Eadie and asked him to fill me in on the issue of the desilting basin, how it was created on Mr. Stoker's lot. So I'll let you just lead that discussion, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Chairman Jackson and fellow Commissioners, subsequent to Blau's request for more information about the history of the construction of the existing basin on Stoker's property, we contacted Flood Control. They have a representative here to answer any additional questions. But as I understand it, there is no record with the PND of any permit ever having been issued to do the work. However, that is not surprising because, under the Flood Control Act, the Flood Control District does not need a permit to do such work. They only need the property owner's permission. So at this point in time, it's assumed that in the early 90s, which would be prior to when Stoker took possession of the property, Flood Control wanted to grade this basin in reaction to the aforementioned fire. The property owner at that time gave the Flood Control Department permission to do the grading, and they commenced with it without pulling a permit.
Ms. Black, did you want to?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make one clarification, and that is, because the site is located in the inland area, no permits are required from planning and development for the flood control work. If it were located in the coastal zone, they would. I think the Commission's familiar with that, and I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, and the question is not whether a permit is required, if I could have a pointer. Sure. Thank you. My really question for Flood Control is, is that whether or not Mr. Stoker is required to maintain that retarding basin. I mean, my understanding of the way flood control, floodwaters work is that, that, you know, he's going to have the obligation to retard water on his own site, but he has no obligation to retard water that's coming through his site. So I think it, what's happening is it's getting picked up at two drop inlets, and right now it goes to the desilting basin, and then it kind of retards the flow that's going on the golf course. If Mr. Stoker were to take it upon himself to regrade that site back to its original condition, which I believe he has the right to do, then there would be an adverse impact on the golf course. And I'm just wondering, here from Flood Control, if I'm right in that assessment or how this whole issue works.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I'm Tom Farah, Deputy Public Works Director. Maybe I can answer a little bit of the history and how we got to this point, and perhaps answer the question Commissioner Blau had. After the Oak Hill fire, the watershed above the Vandenberg Village was basically denuded. It's a sandy watershed to begin with. And a lot of this is off a sketchy memory because it was in the 90s. We contacted the property owner. The property was, was excavated out for a sediment basin, not a retarding basin. We wanted to try to work with the areas. I think the golf course, as I recall, was concerned about sediment coming down on the golf course would make it a little more difficult for them. So that property was modified, and because it was basically, I forget what, it was zoned open space or whatever the land use was, there was, there was really no consideration or recognized need at the time that, that anything further needed to be done. We excavated a shallow basin, and it stands at that point today. We're not doing any maintenance on that. We do not own the property. We recognize that. It was more of an emergency response to the fire. Its need is no longer necessary as a, as a sediment basin. So Mr. Stoker had asked us previously that if or when we're moving fill in the area, that if we can bring material back slowly over time, we've agreed to do that. It's, you know, it's as, as we have material available and within a locality to, to take it there, we can, we can certainly do that. But I think the, the history of that was, it was an emergency response with permission of the property owner.
And I guess my concern is, I think I heard from the golf course people that prior to that being graded the way it's graded today, they did have a problem with water flooding their fairways. And I would think they would have a problem today if we, because although it may be a desilting basin, it acts as a retarding basin now. And it certainly disperses the water that's concentrated in the two drop inlets. So is there going to be an adverse impact to the golf course if, I think there's going to be an impact, adverse impact to golf course if that is not dealt with? And that's my question maybe to you. You may not be able to answer it today because you don't have the hydrology and the way to do that, but the history of the, history of it, there was a problem.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, I can't speak to that. I do know that frequently golf courses are located in such areas, and flooding of a fairway is generally more acceptable than flooding of a residential area. It seems to be an appropriate, however, the golf course obviously has their own concerns. I can't address whether or not they had a problem before and they don't now. I just don't know. I don't have that information.
Are there any additional questions or issues to be raised with the staff report? Or are we prepared to go into deliberations? I'm going to assume that we do. This is a third district project. We made a commitment to, I believe at our last meeting, to a course of action, which necessitated that we have conditions of denial, which is why we moved it to this date. And barring any substantive changes, I think we owe it to the process to facilitate what we, what we decided at that time. But Commissioner Blau.
I only have one comment, and that is on the reasons for denial. I think it's missing one. I think the one that's missing is the fact that one of the reasons for denial was the failure of the Board of Supervisors to initiate a community plan for the Lompoc area. And I'd like to see that in there. And with Commissioner Brown's position, she wanted to send a message to the Board. I think a letter would have been more appropriate, but we can do it in form of a condition. So I would propose that that condition be added.
While we're still in the discussion phase on this, more as a point of discuss, an issue that I feel I need to raise, but not necessarily that's going to alter it, which is that I am concerned if we, and I know that we have the capacity and the authority or right to initiate a project, and then if we don't, if the, if the project that arrives is unacceptable, there is no qualm with a denial. But I do have a problem with the notion that if the denial is premised on the lack of a community plan, and there wasn't a community plan when the initiation took place, and there's still no community plan when it comes forward, I'm uncomfortable ethically a little bit with that as a, as a fairness issue. We certainly have that right, but it's, it's an awkward to revisit a condition that was in place later on when it was the same at the place that it was initiated. And I just bring that as a comment because I think it's inherently awkward. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there is a community plan. It just happens that it hasn't been updated like other communities. I mean, it was updated last time in 1980, but, and we've been in the queue several times, and we've been taken out of the queue. But there is a community plan, so that's not quite the case.
However, if you, if you, just to, just to respond, if you take, if you initiate a study of a project that would necessitate a change to that plan, a project can always be denied on its merits, but if it, it requires a, a change to the plan and there is no plan, I'm uncomfortable with the same condition being in place two years later as a means of denying it at that point. I'm uncomfortable with it. I don't know whether there's anything we can do because we do have the, the capacity to do it. I'm just, find it disquieting. Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, I understand your discomfort, and, and I think what's happened is that we've had two different decisions on this project. And in each case, there's been a division among the Commissioners as to the appropriateness of the project going forward. Now, what happened in the interim between the decision originally, the conceptual decision, and now the project itself, is that there's been a change in the, the division of the Commissioners. I think that happens quite often, and it's based on additional information. It can be based on rethinking the project. I realize that the applicant's placed in an awkward position, but all applicants are treated alike, and, and certainly that's the case of any general plan amendment. As far as Commissioner Blau's suggestion, while it's, it's accurate to suggest that, at least in the discussion we had on this project two weeks ago, the fact that there has not been an initiation of a general plan is important to one or more Commissioners. I think the only thing that we need to describe in our findings is the, is the fact that it is not the comprehensive plan amendment that's required is not considered to be appropriate. I don't think we have to bring in the Board of Supervisors as far as their decision to initiate or not. It's clearly going to be before the Board in the event the applicant appeals this, so they have the opportunity to reconsider that decision. But I think the findings are adequate for denial, and we should approve them as is today so that the applicant has the maximum opportunity to bring the matter before the Board of Supervisors as soon as possible.
Okay. Commissioner Blau.
I'm just going to comment that Commissioner Brown was very, very clear at our last meeting that except for the fact there is no community plan, she liked the project and probably would have approved it. So I actually think that that finding is, is appropriate, is important, and I appreciate it being included. That being said, I also need to make sure I understand this because there's a difference between a community plan and a general plan update. And I think for Commissioner Valencia's benefit, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there is a community plan for this area. There is just a general plan that's been approved some many years ago. So I would hope that other Commissioners would include that condition for denial so we can go forward.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of comments, not to enter into your deliberations at all. This item will be forwarded to the Board whether the Commission approves, recommends approval or denial. I just wanted to make that clear. And in terms of the status of the comprehensive plan in this area, Commissioner Blau is correct. There is a, the land use element that operates in the Lompoc area. There are area and community goals within that, that land use element, and we did do some interim work. Seems to me it was sometime in the 90s to address some policy issues, but it was, it was not a full-blown community plan update or community plan.
But, but the, the general plan has been considered the community plan for the area.
It's, it's the.
And it's been reported that way in the paper, and it's been reported that way. And it's been reported that way in the paper and it's been reported that way in, at board of supervisors meetings and-
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Valencia, we, when we do community plans in particular areas, it essentially overlays the land use element that, that the remainder of the county operates under. So some people refer to it as a community plan.
Okay. If there are any further comments at this point, otherwise I'm going to make the motion that we accept the recommendations included in the staff report for today and the enhanced or rewritten conditions for denial and the, I don't think it's conditions for denial, findings for denial, and the revised board resolution recommendation at this time. And I will seek a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion at this time? Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, just to be real clear here, it was my agreement with the commissioner at our last meeting that we wanted, that this is going to be denied. And we want it to go before the board with the conditions for approval. In order to do that, I need to abstain. That would allow this to go forward to the board with the recommendations, with the conditions for denial. If I were to vote for it, and it was two-two, it would still be denied, but the conditions wouldn't go forward. So in order to assist Mr. Stoker to get this up to where it needs to get to, that's why I'm going to abstain from voting this morning.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Just to Commissioner Blau's last point, in view of the fact the maker of the motion was one of the opponents last time, I think you are free to, to oppose the motion if you choose to do so. We would still have a three-vote majority if all the rest of us voted for it.
I don't think, I don't think the maker of the motion was going to support it. I think it's, I'm going to abstain. You guys can do what you want. That way it gets there for certain.
Okay.
Keeping in, Commissioner Valencia?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for attorney. You know, there's abstentions being used at this meeting over and over. In my understanding, that abstentions are used when you have a conflict of interest in some way, but other than that, it's either up or down, yes or no. Could you give us a ruling on that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, I actually, I reviewed the procedures manual for the planning commission, and the only instance where it addresses an abstention is just that an abstention so disqualified the commissioner as a voting member. And so the remaining commissioners, it needs to be a majority in order to take action. It does not cover the appropriate circumstances for an abstention.
So you don't have a position on it? We, at, at one meeting, we asked, we used to have briefings from your chief counsel, and he said, there's three ways. One, you're either for it or against it, or the abstention. He says the abstention is when you have a conflict of interest in some sort. That was how it was explained to us at a briefing.
That wasn't consistent with the understanding I was given when I joined it. A recusal, a recusal was a conflict issue, but-
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, I, I'm not familiar with that, with those three circumstances that you've just raised. If that is something that the commission would like me to look at and take a quick break, I can absolutely do that. But otherwise, I do not have any more information before me.
Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, I think this is more into the policy or philosophy of the commission and less into the rules. I can, I can tell you, I've seen commissioners abstain when they haven't been here at a previous meeting, when they don't feel like they've had enough opportunity to review the materials that were presented. So for a variety of reasons, or if they just didn't choose to vote. So I, and I think Commissioner Blau is, you know, honoring what he said at the last meeting, which was that he would abstain. So I don't think, it should be a surprise that he was going to abstain on this one.
It's not a surprise. What I'm asking is for a clarification by county council.
I think it's an individual, I just, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Valencia, I think it's really a philosophy of the commission and an individual choice. I don't think that the, the rules govern that.
Yeah. I don't mind at a later date if that, if you find something that is germane to, to check it out. I think there's, we're blurring some issues of recusal and abstention, and I don't believe that Mr., Commissioner Blau was under any obligation to tell us why he was going to abstain. He just happened to do so. And we're prepared, I think, at this junction, juncture to, to get on with it and complete this item. So barring that, I'll have a roll call. Ms. Opland?
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Bill Carey, 301.
Okay. Do we need some setup time for the next item?
Three minutes.
We'll take five minutes. And Ms. Opland, if you'll read the next item into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Jim Loja of Rice Ranch Ventures LLC to consider case numbers 08 RMM4, application filed on August 18th, 2008, and 08 RVP8, application filed on August 25th, 2008, and to accept 03 EIR05 as adequate environmental review for case numbers 08 RMM4 and 08 RVP8 pursuant to Section 15162 of the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Okay. Thank you very much. Before we go forward, do any of my colleagues have any ex parte or site visit disclosures? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I met with the applicant and Ms. Tamura and did a site visit and a tour of the entire development a couple of days ago.
Okay. Commissioner Blau?
I did the same thing exactly.
I received a call from Ms. Tamura but was unable to schedule it. I have driven the site on a number of occasions. Commissioner Cooney, did you wish to share anything or?
I, I had a call also from Mr. Tamura's office. I was unable to schedule a site visit.
Okay. Mr. Zorovich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just kind of get right into this one. The Rice Ranch project recorded map modification. The Rice Ranch project is located in southern, for those of you who are familiar with it, in Southern Orchid, at the south of Rice Ranch Road, Stubblefield Road, at the terminus, southern terminus of Bradley Road. This is just kind of an overview really what the Rice Ranch project is. It kind of, I think, start from there. It actually includes five neighborhoods. Going from the east is the Grove, the Meadows, the Oaks neighborhood, Pine Creek, and the Valley View neighborhood. Total of 725 homes was, was allowed and approved by the board in December 2003. There's also a 26-acre community park included in the Rice Ranch project. And then, if you'll notice, there's also some, in addition to the community park, some neighborhood parks. One in the Valley View, the one of the Oaks, which is of, say on today's discussion, one in the Meadows, and also one in Valley View neighborhood. Looking a little bit closer view at the Oaks neighborhood, again, there's 152 allowed single-family homes in this neighborhood. Lots of a ranging, or do range between eight to 10,000 square feet roughly. This is the existing Pine Grove Elementary School. This would be Bradley Road right here. And this is right here, it would be Rice Ranch Road. This here is a site, which is a future school site. As part of the Rice Ranch project, they were required to dedicate that through requirements of the Orchid Community Plan to the Orchid School District. And then right here is the location of the neighborhood park. Again, the project was approved in December 2003 by the board of supervisors. Phase one of the project was recorded in September 2007. That recordation included the Pine Creek and Oaks neighborhood, those two neighborhoods that are kind of central to the Rice Ranch development project. As part of the requirements recordation, the applicant was required to bond for all public amenities. Included in that was the Oaks Neighborhood Park. As the applicant is requesting to defer construction of the park, I checked with the Parks Department and, and checked on the bond and the amount, if you had concerns, you know, with that, by deferring it. The bond was basically given to the county in 2006. According to the Parks Department, they feel that the amount that the bond was provided is still sufficient, that if, for some unforeseen reason, if the applicant can fulfill that obligation, there's still enough money in the bond amount that they could go forward and construct the park. So just to kind of let the commission know about some assurances that would, that the county has if, for whatever reason, the applicant was unable to fulfill that obligation. As part of the Rice Ranch project, the conditions require that the neighborhood parks be completed prior to occupancy clearance of the first residence. That condition is a fairly, what I'd call standard condition. There's several Orchid developments. One was located on Keysight 5, which had a two-acre park. Another one was located on Keysight 17, the Stonegate Project. Both those projects, I believe, also had the same condition timing requirement. So this requirement here that you're seeing on the Rice Ranch neighborhood is not something that was special due to the Rice Ranch development, but also we see on other developments in Orchid. Today's request is to modify the condition 19 of TM 14430, that's the map for the Rice Ranch project, the tentative map, and conditions 109 and 111 of the Oaks Neighborhood Development Plan, 03 DVB12. The request is to defer the completion of the park until September 1st, 2009. The way the revised condition also reads is it would allow the applicant up to 70 occupancy clearances between now and September 1st, 2009. So while they're working on the completion of the park, they would have, they'd be allowed to give additional occupancy clearances. One of the reasons the applicant has cited their, their request is that essentially this portion is where they're, they're working on their first phase of development here. And so what they've said is they don't have, they haven't extended the neighborhood, the roads and stuff to access the park. So it would be a little difficult if they were to complete the park right now because there would be real no access to it. This is basically a construction zone. It's been graded, but there's no residences there. There's no streets that, that provide direct access to that. And there could be some conflicts with people traversing the construction area and trying to get to this park. That's one of the reasons they've, they've requested a extension on, or deferral of the completion of the park. Staff is supportive of the request. One reason why is that although this park is not completed, it's approximately 1.3 acres, this park, the community park, has been completed. It hasn't been yet cleared for public to enter to it. I've spoken with the Parks Department. They anticipate that in January, this coming January, the community will have access to that park. I think they're just basically waiting for the sod and turf to get established before they allow a lot of people onto the park. This is just a picture of the park in case some of those who haven't gone out to it. This is the, actually the eastern portion of the park. As you can see here, this is the, one of the ball fields. There's two softball fields here, restrooms, kind of a gathering area. This is the parking lot. Right here is a large geographical feature. It's the Pine Creek. And the Pine Creek and this portion of the project site drops off fairly significantly, almost straight down. So there was a requirement to, to put in a brand-new bridge to connect basically the parking area to the play fields. This is one of the concession stands. And then just kind of looking further to the west, that's that corner of the concession stand you saw in that previous picture. Here's another one, restrooms. Here's a tot lot located here, some green space. Out to this end, you can't really see it, but it's the area for a soccer field. And then out on this side of the creek is a dog park, or actually two, one for small dogs and large dogs. So it's, it's quite a facility that the applicant has already essentially completed. So even though they're asking for deferral of construction of the 1.3-acre park, there is a park that has been completed for this, for this site. And it's roughly a half acre away from the Oaks Neighborhood. Environmental review, with regards to that, we're asking that the planning commission find that the previous supplemental ER is adequate. Essentially, there's no new residential units as part of the proposed project. There's no additional traffic or anything associated with that. There's no real significant changes to the physical environment. It's just deferring the timing of when the park would be completed. Project analysis, as conditioned, the project is, is consistent with the Orchid Community Plan, the Rice Ranch specific plan, the general plan, subdivision regulations in our land use development code. And just to rack it up, wrap it up then, the recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the required findings, including SEQA findings, determine or accept the previous approved supplemental ER as adequate, and then approve the proposal, recorded map modification, and revision to the development plan, and modify the conditions as, as listed in attachment B. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any commissioner questions for staff at this point? Seeing none, we'll go to the applicant. And how much time do you think you will need?
Not more than five minutes.
Okay, super.
Even that. Thank you. My name's Lori Tamora with Urban Planning Concepts. I'm here today with Jim Loja from Rice Ranch Ventures. We've been working on this project now for about four years. Rice Ranch Ventures acquired it a year after the approval from the board of supervisors. With that approval came about 185 conditions and many departmental letter conditions. And over the last four years, between the master map conditions and then the follow-up, the Oaks and the Pine neighborhood conditions, we have been following the staff's review and, and meeting those conditions of approval. They included $17 million worth of bonds to cover a number of different improvements, including almost $4 million for the park that you just saw pictures of. We did put in two new signals, widening Rice Ranch Road and Bradley, and putting in quite a bit of infrastructure. And including, if you don't mind, John, the one picture that you had, I'd like to point out, the second Parks picture. One of the features that is being very much appreciated by the community is a second water tank that's been installed, a 1.5 million gallon water tank to serve for all of the Orchid community right behind the existing tank. So you can imagine that this has been quite an endeavor over the last couple of years. And as we moved through the project, we did sign a number of bond agreements. And again, one of them was for the neighborhood park. And we started going through the construction phase, and for whatever reason, we missed completing that park. And so we are asking for a deferral. Could you put the site plan up that you had? Right now, there are the, yeah, that's perfect, that one. Yeah. Right now, the model homes are located on this street. We have seven homes in this area and a number of homes located over here that are under construction. And the first group of homes in the Pine Creek area are under construction. We have 33 building permits ready to go. And so we appreciate staff bringing this to the planning commission as quickly as they had. We know that it was very much an effort on John's part and Diane's, and we really thank them and getting it on this agenda. We do have two homes that we had hoped to have occupied by September 1st when we tripped on this condition. And we, the staff allowed furniture to be moved in. There's furniture there, but not people. And so we're hoping that, based on your planning commission action today, we can get occupancy clearance tomorrow. People are sitting in hotel rooms right now waiting for this determination. One home is here and the other one's right here. They're ready to be moved in. The rest of the homes that are under construction right now are probably going to be early in October and throughout the rest of the year. And of course, we are a little surprised about the deferral. That's going to affect some of our construction plans, but, or the furlough that's going to be happening. So we got to rearrange some of the construction schedule. But we hope that planning commission will support this deferral of the condition. There's a $200,000 bond, and Parks Department has approved the construction of this neighborhood park right here. We are talking about bringing these homes into this area as quickly as possible. And of course, everything's based on the market. But we agree with staff's condition to have the park completed by September of 2009, and we're moving forward to do that. Do you have any comments, Jim? I'm available for any questions. And again, thanks staff for the work that they've done to bring this forward.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I will open it for public comment at this time. I have no speaker slips other than the applicant. And Ms. Tamura, is there anyone that wishes to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. And if there are any further comments or concerns, Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I, well, can I sympathize with this situation? I have a, maybe a bigger concern as we go forward, although this is a mistake that is, you know, a clear oversight on the behalf, on the, on behalf of the, caused by the developer. I've been in situations where there are things that get out of your control that could delay this. I mean, particularly PG&Es, one, one really good example. I mean, you put plans to them months in advance, you arrange dates, and you think you're all done, and all of a sudden, there's some disaster and they pull off, don't get there for two, three months. So I'm wondering if there isn't something we can do as a county where we give the planning director some authority to deal with these kinds of issues. The problem here is, is that we're really not making the developers suffer. It's a, it's two people in the, in the public that are sitting there ready to move in. They're in a hotel room and they're not able to- They're in a hotel room, and they're not able to, to take advantage of moving into their house. So I'd asked staff to kind of look into it, to see if there wasn't something we could do countywide to give staff the authority to sort of take care of this right, the wrong, or to deal with, not hurt the public, as we've done in this particular case. And then I have a, a possible modification I want to talk to you about this condition when we get that answered.
Okay. Ms. Black, do you want to take a shot at that?
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Blau, for alerting me to your question in advance. I think it helps County Council and Planning and Development be prepared to answer it. With respect to the, the case that we have and, and many cases that we see, this project is both, includes both a development plan and a tract map. And in this case, a tract map, that's obviously recorded. They've sold lots. We have flexibility in our land use development code to make modifications to the development plan portion of this project, but we don't have the same flexibility under the Subdivision Map Act on the recorded map modification, or under the map provisions of the Map Act. And so I've asked County Council to address your Commission as to what the possibilities are to, to create that flexibility.
Ms. Allen.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, members of the Commission. Chapter 21, specifically in Division 3, has modification to recorded map procedures. And those procedures, you know, in our code, provide that, and I'll just quote, "Procedure for modification of a final or parcel map, lot split plat, or lot line adjustment, any proposed modification, any proposed modification of a final or parcel map, or lot line adjustment, shall require a public hearing before the decision-maker with current jurisdiction." And so that is now in our code. And as Diane is mentioning, I believe it comes directly from the Subdivision Map Act law, though I would have to double-check that to be certain.
Okay. Commissioner Blau.
So that, that being said, let me ask this question. I know that it's the practice of lots of communities to put the conditions for the PD, and the same conditions appear in the tract map. Is that necessary? And the question I would have to you, if we didn't have this condition in the tract map, but had it in the PD, we wouldn't be here, we might not be here today, am I correct? So that being the case, I just want to make staff aware of that, because I think when we take a look at subdivision maps in the future, let's not duplicate what's on PD and on the map. In fact, let's not put anything on the map that isn't absolutely necessary, so that we have the flexibility to take care of the public when that kind of situation arises. Unless anybody has other comments, I'm, go ahead.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I share Commissioner Blau's concern that this matter had to come back before the Commission, but the principle of bringing tract map modifications back to the Commission is one I strongly support. It seems to be the case that, that conditions are applied to projects often with the consent of the applicant at the time a project is approved, and it's sometimes a very important condition that otherwise a park or an amenity might not be completed. And I, I think we owe it to the Planning Commissions of the past and the, and the decisions that have been made to approve these projects, to be available, to consider modifications regardless of whether we think they're significant or not. And in, in most cases, I think we're going to be in a position to approve them. Sure, it's inconvenient for the applicant, but I think that's a price to pay for the overall development. Our, our main duty is to the community. And whereas I don't think the community would be disadvantaged by a delay of one year in the completion of, of this particular neighborhood park, given the circumstances, I can imagine other circumstances where the community would be disadvantaged and, and we'd want to be involved in that. So I think it's case by case, and, and Commissioner Blau's goal of flexibility is certainly laudable, but I'd be reluctant to take conditions out of tract maps if, if their modification was not subject to public scrutiny. So it's just a different side of it. In this case, I, I don't have any problem with a quick approval and, and the convenience to the two homeowners should be paramount.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, my only other comment is, having done this for so many years, I'm, I'm more concerned that as a staff, we get the conditions written correctly to begin with. And this one, I don't think, was written correctly to begin with. It's especially true when you have such a large project, it's multi-phase. The reality is, is that you can't tell sometimes when you're at the tract map stage, how you're actually going to build the project. But the problem is, some of the engineering issues, you don't know until way after the tract map is, is occurred, how sewers go in, or how roads go in, or how utilities might go in. And although you might think that the phasing plan you put forward is appropriate when you do the tract map, things change, and other, which becomes available. So for example, it would have been much better, I think, if this condition had, had been written to begin with, that a phasing plan to be approved by the Director of Public Works or the Director of Planning and appropriate bonds posted, could have been the condition, and then they could have dealt with it as need be. In particular, this one's so goofy, because if they put the park in today, there's no way to get to it. You've got to go across a dirt road. And even if the park was there, you don't want your children playing in that park when they're going to be constructing the houses that are around the park. You want to do those first, so you don't have conflicts between, those kind of issues are easy to understand. Just want to be able to give the authority to the, to the Director of Planning to make those determinations, so that it's done in a fair and proper manner. Having said that, I'm going to propose a small condition, change to this condition. For the reason I just discussed, about having the houses done around the park before they do the park, I'd like to be able to give the planning director the right to delay this September 1st, 2009 date, up to one more year, and let it be at the planning director's discretion. If they come and ask for a continuation to be on September 1st of 2009, and you can see they're making progress building the house, it seems appropriate, the bond's still in place, give the planning director the ability to make that extension.
Trying to understand what Commissioner Blau's saying. You mean, extend the date if they need more time?
Correct.
All right. I don't have any problem.
And it would be, you know, obviously, if they've got 69 houses, I probably wouldn't extend it. But if they've only got 30, they're not next to the park yet, then I would be appropriate to extend it for another year, to get the houses done around the park before they build the park.
For myself, I like the desired result as it, as it impacts the project before us. I am concerned that it may be problematic and baby-going-out-with-the-bath-water if this is going to expand beyond it. I mean, I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable with the staff report as it is, and I'd like them to get going and, and move. I don't know what we save, per se. I suppose we save another hearing and another cost, so an, an add-on to it doesn't bother me to that extent. But I'm not so sure we've created some, LA County has a different structure for this type of stuff. It might be worth looking at, because I saw it when I was financing there. But they generally do large projects on a more regular basis than here. That being said, I could go with that, as long as it doesn't provide us with a bigger problem down the road.
Mr. Chair, the only provision I would want to include as well, based upon input we received from the Parks Department, is just a review of the bond, because it may or may not cover the costs out two years.
That was part of my change, that the bond amount will be approved by you at the time of the extension. And if you defer it to Parks Department, that's fine as well.
Okay. Is there any other further questions or discussion?
Two hundred.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney.
Just to clarify, it's one additional year. The discretion is up to one additional year.
Correct.
You don't think we're guaranteeing that, that the applicant will be delaying it for another year?
No, because he only gets to use 70 occupancies between now and then, so, no. And if he doesn't get to the 70, there's no reason to put the park in, because he's not got to the park yet with the housing.
Okay. Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, this is a, is this a fourth or a fifth? This is a fifth, fourth project? I don't see any further discussion. I imagine we're ready to enter the deliberative phase. Commissioner Valencia, do you want to lead us in that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, my feeling is that also, once they get those units in there, they'll put, they'll have to put the road in. Once the road in, they can just, whether the 70 units are in or not, they can go on and put the park in. I asked if they needed an extension. They said, no, they'd have to put the street in, but I don't see any problem, if there's rainy days, you never know what's going to happen. I, I don't see any problem with a possible extension, that the Director would give that extension of three months, six months, or up to a year. I don't have any problem with that, provided that the Parks Department takes care of this item through their process. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion whenever you're ready.
I, I think we are ready, though. I, I did think that the offer of the accommodation is, because they're under some pressure, just to have that mentioned in, in the forethought as we look at the furlough period, et cetera. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, one accommodation we may not be able to make is granting occupancy immediately. The permit, or the map modification, the approval today is not effective until the appeal period has run, so actually, there's 10 days to go.
Okay. Commissioner Blau.
So my question to Council would be, tell me in the code of the law, were we don't have the right to issue occupancy? I know it's a policy of the county that you don't issue occupancy, release gas permits, until that occurs, but what happens if we do anyway?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Blau, our conditions, you know, call for no occupancy until all the conditions have been fulfilled. This condition will not have been removed until the recorded modification is effective. It's not effective until 10 days from now. I mean, that's one way of putting it.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Blau, we did agree to an accommodation, which is probably not entirely consistent with, with the conditions of approval. And that is that, once the applicant has submitted their paperwork to the surveyor's office to, to basically affect, affect this, then we'll issue occupancy. So they don't have to actually go through the recordation process, because we'll have control over it. But we can't do that until the appeal period has closed, and so, because of the terms of the condition. So I think we have 10 days.
Can you release the gas meter?
They, no. Because we, the only way you can do that is to issue occupancy clearance. And if I issued, if I told Building and Safety to issue occupancy clearance, I would be telling them to do something contrary to the conditions.
Okay. Then, and this may be another county-wide issue, but I know in other jurisdictions, I'm able to get things that are called temporary occupancy permits, when not all conditions have been met. And the issue is, and the issue is, is that you have to make sure that all the fire and safety, health, safety issues are complied with, and you give them a temporary occupancy permit pending the completion of this. So could we give them a TCO pending the appeal period expiring?
Mr. Chair.
Again, their risk is, is that if for some reason they appealed it and it's not approved, they got to move out, which is what happens with, with the TCO in any other jurisdiction I've been, had dealt with.
Mr. Chair, we looked at all of these options when we were trying to figure out a way to get them in before you, before you even heard this. And Dave Allen was not the County Council that I was consulting with, it was Mike Gazoni. And he indicated that was not, that was not an appropriate path. So if, if you want to explore this more, maybe we want to see if, if Mr. Gazoni can come down and.
That'd be great. I'd love to, because I'm able to do it anyplace else, and I can't figure out why I can't do it here. The real issue is, as long as the fire, health, safety issues are dealt with, and no one's at risk, it seems silly that you can't accommodate these two homeowners.
Ms. Black, just a quick question. Rather than sustain us open on this process, that would sound like something that might be, if it's possible, effectuated independent of us. Is that right?
Well, Mr. Chair, it's not your decision to make. So if you want to talk about it, we can talk about it. You don't have to hold up your action on the case, because it's simply not your decision to make.
Commissioner Cooney.
In terms of the legality, Mr. Allen will correct me if I'm wrong on this. I, I don't think any action we take today is final action until the appeal period runs. In other words, it's, it's, it's action we take that is our intention to cause a certain result. But anybody could appeal that during the appeal period, and our action is not final until that appeal period is up, just the same as any court decision. So I, I think that's the problem. Now, there may be an interim remedy that's available to staff. Otherwise, I, I can't comment on that. But I know that regardless of what we do today with regard to this project or any other, there's a, there's a period of time during which the parties or members of the public have the opportunity to appeal, so our action isn't final. And, and if I'm wrong about that, Mr. Allen, we should clarify that.
And, Mr. Chair, just to make it clear, Commissioner Cooney is correct.
Well, then I think we have but one proposition before us, and that is to act on the motion to make it go as quickly as possible, with probably the subjective commentary to you that we, if there are, if there's a way to achieve an objective faster, that you will take with it our conceptual approval to do so. You got my point. So I think at this point, we need to go forward with the motion. Mr. Commissioner Valencia.
I'm ready to make the motion, Mr. Chair.
I think I'm prepared to tell you to do it.
All right. And with that, I move that we adopt the required findings for the project specified in Attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQA findings, and that we accept the SEQA determination based on 03EIR-05 pursuant to Section 15162 of the SEQA guidelines, as described in Section 6.1 of the staff report, is adequate environmental review for the project, and that we approve 08RMM-08 and 08RVP-08 by modifying Condition Number 1943109, 111 and 133, as shown in Attachment B. And are there any additional changes at this meeting that need to be included?
Yes, the language change allowing a one-year extension at the discretion of the Director, who may also modify the bond requirement.
And so included, as the attorney indicated.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Only thing I want to say is, I wish I were 16 again to go play in that park. That's a great soccer venue, as well as softball. Yes, there are that, too, but I'm not 16. Okay, then, Ms. Opel, let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson.
Aye.
Vote carries for zero.
Okay. We will take, how much time to set up for the next item?
Thank you, thank you for this item, and we'll work with staff on the clearances. Thank you.
Okay. We'll, we'll take three minutes.
... the site, but not with regard to the project.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, good morning, Mr. Briggs. Would you like to start with your staff report?
I would. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, we are here to discuss the Flannery NEF lot line adjustment and the Flannery lot split and lot size variance. The project site is located in the coastal portion of the county, in an existing developed rural neighborhood known as Shepherd's Mesa. And just to orient yourself here, you can see 101 as it crosses the county line here. We have Ventura County to the south. Highway 150 leads out to the northeast, and the project site is located here in Shepherd's Mesa. Both the NEF and Flannery parcels are zoned 3E1. The NEF parcel is approximately 1.1 acres in size and contains a single-family residence and garage, shown here. The Flannery parcel is approximately 6.7 acres in size, contains a single-family residence, a guest house and barn structure here, a detached barn here, and several accessory structures here. The lot line adjustment would transfer .39 acres of land currently encumbered by an exclusive easement held by NEF. by NEF. And there you can see, that's, that's the lotline adjustment right there. The easement was granted to NEF for the sole and exclusive use for any and all purposes. So, in effect, what this easement granted NEF was an illegal subdivision. And, uh, the underlying land being controlled by NEF, it constitutes a violation of the Subdivision Map Act. So, approval of the project would remedy this violation. So, that's the first piece. Second piece is the Flannery lot split. The remaining 6.3-acre Flannery parcel would then be split into two resultant parcels of 3.3 and 3.02 acres. The existing guest house and barn would be required to be converted to a single-family residence. And, um, here you can see the proposed line. Proposed parcel B is already developed with a single-family residence here, but upon the lot split, proposed parcel A would contain several structures. And in order to retain those structures, the property owner would have to, um, initiate a primary use, and that primary use would be residential in this case. And, uh, in this case, this guest house-barn structure would be converted to a single-family residence in order to establish that primary use. And that is required by the conditions of approval. Um, in order to comply with the setback regulations, two accessory structures that are located here along the prop, the, the proposed property line would either be removed or relocated. The lot split also requires the approval of a lot width variance to proposed parcel A. Proposed parcel A would have an average lot width of 200 feet, as opposed to the 210 feet required by Article II. And, um, I have gotten calls both from the applicant and a few of the neighbors, who were a little confused by the language that was used in the staff report. So, I wanted to be very clear that Article II requires that the lot have an average width of 210 feet. And so, in this case, they're asking for a variance to the lot width for 10 feet, from 210 down to 200, not to the minimum lot width, which would be 150. So, if we look back at the exhibit here, the pinch point of the lot, the, the narrowest point would be 150 feet, and that was what was discussed in the staff report. Um, but when you average the width along the entire length of the lot, you end up with 200. So, we'd simply be granting a variance to go from 210 to 200. Um, the findings for making a variance are somewhat difficult, and, um, it speaks to granting, um, privileges to, um, the applicant that are not enjoyed by the rest of the neighborhood. So, what staff did was, we looked at the rest of the neighborhood to see if there were other lots, uh, with identical zoning that, uh, have variations to the lot width. And of the 57 surrounding properties that are zoned 3E1, we find that 29 of them actually have lot widths smaller than what the zone district calls for. So, this, granting this variance for lot width would not be, uh, granting the applicant anything that the neighborhood already doesn't have. Um, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated for the project. It underwent a 30-day public review period. It identified Class II impacts in aesthetic visual resources, air quality, cultural resources, geologic processes, noise and water resources. Uh, we received two public comments from neighbors. Those were included with your staff report, along with, uh, the changes that were made to the document in response to those comments. As conditioned, the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the coastal land use plan, the Chapter 21 subdivision regulations, and the Article II zoning requirements. And staff's recommendation is to adopt the required findings, including the SEQA findings, approve the negative declaration, and adopt the mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval, and approve the project subject to the conditions included in Attachments B, C, and D. And as a final point of clarification, I wanted to point out, the, the staff report, uh, states in the appeals section that this project would be appealable to the Coastal Commission, when in fact, it is not. And it also states that no appeal fee would be necessary because of the Coastal Commission appeal, uh, option. And in this case, uh, the $443 appeal fee would apply, because we would not be appealed to the Coastal Commission. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any commissioner questions at this point? Commissioner Cooney.
Uh, yes, Mr. Briggs, good morning. Um, I had one question. I think you touched on the, uh, current use of what would be parcel A of the Flannery, uh, lot split, um, and indicated, uh, there would be, uh, change in use of the buildings. Uh, from my visit, it appeared there was substantial occupation already of those buildings, so trying to figure out what, what differences there would be.
Um, currently, this structure is permitted as a guest house and a barn, so maybe you saw someone staying in the guest house, I'm not sure. Um, but they do have valid permits for the structures that are there now, and their current uses are, the structure is actually split into two different uses, one for a barn, one for a guest house.
And the, and the proposed change is?
The proposed change, in order to convert this to a residence, uh, we would simply add a kitchen to the guest house. And they could alter the interior walls between the guest house and the barn to make it all one residence if they wanted.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions? Uh, do we have, uh, an applicant presentation at this point? And if so, can you give me an estimate of what your timeframe needs would be?
My time would be, I'm Tony Fisher here on behalf of Lon and Dory NEF. I'm the applicant related to the lotline adjustment. I'm gonna take about two minutes of your time.
Okay. Good morning and welcome.
Okay, again, uh, I am Tony Fisher here on behalf of Lon and Dory NEF, who are the owners of the property to which their, the lotline adjustment would add the .39 acres. The staff has clarified everything in my notes that I thought might need to be touched on and clarified, so I do not intend to make any of those comments. I would only state that as to the lot split, which we are not an applicant on, but we are a neighbor, we have, along with the, I think you've probably seen, the 10 letters with 18 signatures supporting that, uh, lot split. Uh, and the only other comment is that the NEF's house and the property around it, including the area being subject to the lotline adjustment, has been used in that configuration since the time the house was built in 1957. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, the other applicant has a presentation, and about how long do you need?
Mr. Chair, my name is Steve Americonner. I'm representing Susan Flannery, and I'll need even less time than Tony Fisher took, because we endorse and support the staff recommendation with just a couple of additional comments. Uh, first, it is actually possible to split the lots without requiring the 10-foot variance. When we first submitted to the county, we submitted a configuration that did that. But the lot line between the two parcels was considerably more irregular than the one you see before you today. And that, in staff's judgment, it would make more sense to have a more regular lot line than it would be to have a sawtooth lot line. And so, with their concurrence, uh, we, we designed a different li, uh, different lot configuration, producing that somewhat regular-shaped, uh, line. And that's the requ, that's what led to the need for this 10-foot lot width variance. That, if you do the math, turns out to be 4.75 percent of the required, uh, zoning requirement. So, we think it's small enough to be approvable by you, and there are good reasons for doing it. Uh, we could do it the other way, although it doesn't, it, it produces a, a lot line that is more difficult to, uh, to deal with. Uh, and then, the second point I would make is that Ms. Flannery bought the property after the exclusive easement was signed by her predecessor in favor of Mr. NEF. She, she basically bought the property with that in place, not realizing that, uh, at least in the view of some, of the county officials, it was gonna turn out to be a subdivision map act violation. And so, she's interested in clearing that up as, as best she can, and that's the reason, one of the reasons that we're here today with that aspect of the proposal. Uh, finally, we'd like to just reserve a couple of minutes in the event there are any comments made to the commission, so that we can deal with those, respond to them, and offer any clarification that we might. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Cooney.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Americonner, I could ask this of staff, but, um, being familiar with the project, one of the, um, concerns of opponents who have written regarding the project is that, uh, there could be additional development, um, further, um, to the south of the existing homes. And, um, perhaps to address that, perhaps because of topography, there are a couple of, uh, uh, envelopes in which no residential development can take place.
I believe that's right. And, and I, I would actually ask Brent Daniels, who is our, uh, land use planner, to address the issue about future development opportunities, 'cause there are conditions that deal with that particular concern.
I think those should be clarified, so I appreciate hearing from Mr. Daniels.
Thanks, Steve. Good morning, Commissioner. Brent Daniels, LNP Consultants, Agent for Mrs. Flannery. Um, Chair and, and Commissioner Cooney, with respect to the, uh, areas of, um, non-residential development, uh, thank you, Aaron. Aaron is pointing to those areas right now, which are in the most southerly locations of, um, both lots A and lots B. Um, Aaron, if you could show the, um, the paddock areas, if you will, or the, the corral areas right in there. That is a, that's, that's under 20 percent slope, so it's a more gentle slope than that of the, the southerly areas. Um, additionally, the southerly areas are contiguous to active farming. We've had this discussion many times in the last couple of months with your commission on other projects. And, uh, in acknowledgement of this active farming, uh, there is also notations on the tentative map, uh, that are notations with respect to right to farm, and the fact that, um, we are reserving this area for no residential purposes. So, in the converse, only non-residential purposes, which would be, um, compatible with the active farming, could be down in those southerly areas. Um, at times, there are horses down in there. That is a horse corral area as well, and we would see those types of uses as compatible. Does that answer your question?
I, just in terms, I, I have a much reduced, um, proposed tentative map, um, which, uh, I think outlines the, uh, no-build areas, and, uh, they're roughly south of the paddock or pasture areas. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, there could conceivably be, uh, a guest house, assuming, uh, neither existing residence is a guest house. There could be a guest house or a second residence developed, uh, in those pasture areas.
I would concur. Future, future development could be accommodated for within those pastures.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Daniels.
Okay, any additional questions for Mr. Daniels, or for any of the applicant present, presenters?
Chair, I would like to reserve just a moment for, uh, condition discussion at the appropriate time.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I will take public comment. If there is anyone in the audience who wishes to comment publicly and has not turned in a slip to Commissioner Blau, please do so. Otherwise, it looks like I, well, I have Mr. Americonner and Mr. Daniels reserved for later. So, I have Mr. Sullivan, followed by Mr. Vanderkar.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the Planning Commission, um, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Briggs for his cooperation and providing all the material that I called for at more or less the last minutes, and was kind enough to, and courtesy, uh, courteous, and kind enough to provide the materials that I requested. Um, the, um, my opinion on, on the property and the lot split, um, but let me say, before I get into that, and I don't, won't take more than two minutes, that it's my opinion that the current owners of the Flannery project are great stewards. I mean, the property looks good, and they are concerned with their neighbors. But I have some reservations of what will happen, when and if the variance is granted and the property is split. One resultant lot would be non-conforming unless granted the variance. That's obvious. Uh, maintaining the area as coastal existent development area is important to, uh, members of Shepherd Mesa and residents of Shepherd Mesa. Shepherd Mesa Road, and I'm not too sure you can point it out right now, but it's kinda on the top of the map, and goes to the right, is a, one lane up, one lane down, and entrance and exit from Shepherd Mesa, and the circle which is on top of Shepherd Mesa. And my feeling is that the increased traffic, which will result from granting, and maybe even, um, and even guest houses that could be built on this property, uh, would add more than 10, uh, shall we say, trips a day into town and back, and of course, put more traffic on that particular road. And that road is windy. There are no less than three blind curves from the bottom of Shepherd Mesa, halfway up the hill where the entrance to this property is located. Uh, I have been a witness to one accident. No, no fatalities, thank, thank goodness. And my, I've been involved in property damage in, for two accidents. One was vehicle, and one was, uh, an accident which came out of control on the right way down Shepherd Mesa, and went into my fenced area, which is a small orchard that I maintain. I'd like to point out on the draft mitigated negative declaration report, page 18, it regards traffic. It says here that the conversion of the family guest house barn to a sing, single-family residence would add less than 10 APD, which is, uh, daily trips, uh, and one peak hour trip to Shepherd Mesa, which is less than a significant amount. Yet, in the draft above, it says that there's no, no impact whatsoever. And I kinda find that difficult to, to believe. Uh, the statement on page 18, uh, and, but as a, said, no, no impact, but as a resident of Shepherd Mesa for 15 years, I know better. I suggest that we recognize the road in its present form does not address the issue of af, added traffic, no matter how small. If this lot split is approved, it's gonna create a precedence encouraging increased development of land, which would otherwise not be able to be developed. And that's gonna add another 10 vehicle trips per day to that road. Earlier this year, a neighbor tried to install at his own expense some road reflectors, but was threatened with arrest by the CHP, who was responsible for regulatory of the traffic, the speeds, and the necessary reflectors of that road. But because he didn't check with the CHP, but yet did a lot of research, and with, with the county saying that this is how it should be done, he felt that he had approval, and went ahead, and it was accomplished. Uh, let's see. Additionally, 100-plus residents, uh, met and held a meeting regarding road safety with Salud Cabo Hall and CHP representatives. To date, nothing has been done. Incidentally, the neighbor had disclosed his intention to the county and installed the reflectors as the county had suggested. But nevertheless, the CHP's finding was that the road is not wide enough to support the reflectors. In other words, their interpretation was that if a person was driving up or down the road, they would tend to be, stay away from the reflectors, which might cause a accident, or, shall we say, an impact with a bank on one side, or even worse, going down the hillside on the other side. I wanna thank you very much for listening to that part of the program. The next part is very simple. It's more or less full disclosure. When a person buys the property, should the variance be granted, uh, they would be asked to recognize that any future development of this particular project would require more scrutiny than perhaps people who currently live on Shepherd Mesa. And I'm asking that they be willing, they sign off on that particular requirement, because it's a very serious requirement. I am also asking that they sign off on the Right to Farm Act, because although there's gonna be a, an entry made where they have been informed, if they don't sign off, my concern is that they perhaps will not recognize the seriousness of the Right to Farm Act. The dust, the potential overspray, the noise, perhaps, is all gonna be significant to them after they, after they take their residence. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me. And any questions that you might have?
Any questions for this speaker? Otherwise, Mr. Vanderkar. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Scott Vanderkar. I reside at 7017 Shepherd Mesa Road. I am the active farming representative. I'm not as active as I'd like to be this morning. I would much rather be out doing my job. But I've taken the time this morning to be here, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to address the commission and appreciate the work you do in this review process. I hope you've had a chance to read my letter to Mr. Briggs that is in your packet. It is seventh page from the back and can be identified up in the left-hand corner. It has my address, the 7017 Shepherd Mesa Road. Having reviewed it myself two months after writing it, I think it does a good job of exposing why this project should not be approved. I would like to take a moment to give you a little idea, I think it's appropriate, on the neighborhood. It's a small community, single entrance. It is a nice neighborhood. We get along well. We are friends. We have respect for each other. Ms. Flannery is no different. She has been a great neighbor. I consider her a friend. We always look forward to getting together for our annual Christmas party. And by speaking today, I may be giving up that opportunity. But I'll take that risk, because I think my words need to be heard. I would also like to recognize the letters, I believe 10 of them, that have been submitted by the applicant. They are from neighbors who support the proposed split. Also, in presenting them or bringing them to your attention, I would also like to point out that not one of the letters references that this proposal meets county requirements. They are all written based on personal opinions as friends and neighbors. Mr. Briggs, could you put the shot on that has the lot split line on it there? Thank you very much. Referring back to Mr. Cooney's comment about the guest house occupancy, it is very common in this area, and I'm sure other areas of the county, that guest houses often become rental units and become full-time occupancy units, which associated traffic and impacts. I would also like to point out the proximity of the houses here that are existing, whether they're called houses, guest houses, stables, et cetera, they are all in one form or another occupied a good part of the time. I can't say that I've sat there to see if people are living there all the time, but significant amount of time. The other very important part of this map is when it was mentioned by Mr. Briggs that there is a requirement for this lot to be an average of 210 feet in width. The minimum width of this lot, if approved, is 150 feet, and that is up at the top of the screen. But mind you, look at the parallel lines until you get down to the edge of the paddock, which becomes steep and is not buildable. That is where it gains the average to get to 200 feet. If you were to draw a line across at the paddocks and go north to the top of the screen, you would have an average width of 150 feet, 60 feet below the 210-foot minimum, 30 percent of what the requirement is. This is significant, and this is why it is not appropriate as a lot split. The people who put these rules in place worked very hard, came up with good rules, recognizing that this type of a minimum approach clusters the housing and would significantly impact the rural atmosphere of the area. And this is my main concern. It is clear that this proposal has been extremely problematic for both the county and the applicant. It has taken several years to arrive at this latest version of a lot split. Even with all the attempts to present a proposal that meets the county requirements, this fails, because the contours, shapes, and terrain do not allow for two conforming lots to be created. Although the three-acre requirement is met, the width requirement is not. A review of the property's topography reveals that the three-acre lot size is misleading, since a much smaller area is usable for a building site, and this area is in close proximity to the existing and adjacent homes. Mitigation and allowing a significant variance to the requirements weakens and compromises the integrity of the protections which are in place to maintain the rural character. To use the argument that was made by Mr. Briggs, that there are 29 other parcels that do not meet the requirements, is to argue that two wrongs make a right. I suspect that some of those 29 are a result of the county failing to follow the rules, just as it is considering doing in this case. Others may have been done illegally, and others may have occurred before the requirements were adopted and therefore were grandfathered in. In any case, it appears to be a rather pathetic argument to use to justify the approval of this project.
Are you fairly close to wrapping up?
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. I do not show any other speakers from the public. I'll take a look at this time. Otherwise, I'll grant, maybe we'll start with Mr. Fisher. Did you want to speak to any issue raised? If not, I'll, I know, no, Mr. Amerikana or Mr. Daniels?
Mr. Chair, pardon me, members of the commission, Aaron, if you wouldn't mind using the pointer to show where Mr. Vanderkar's house is located. I believe it's there. And if you could show the Fishman House, which is next door to it, which is there, and then show the Susan Flannery House, and the Susan Flannery Barn, and the Neff House. And I'm pointing that out so that the commission can see the relative distances between the houses that already are there and have been approved, namely the Vanderkar House and the Goldman House, and how close they are to the agricultural uses, and the other two uses, the Susan's House and Susan's Barn. They are both considerably set back much further. And even if something were to be put into the paddock area, there would still be a very significant distance between the residential uses, these new residential uses, and the farming use. Just to put it into context, so that you could see about his comments. With respect to the issue of the lot line, as I mentioned before, we think that the lot line that we've drawn makes sense in terms of having a regular lot line. We could draw it another way and comply with the strict letter of the county's ordinance, but it doesn't, it doesn't make good sense. It doesn't make good planning sense. And that's the reason for this very slight variance that we're requesting.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah. Did I understand that the average lot width is 200 feet, and that we do meet the minimum 150 feet? Did you tell me the narrowest part of the lot was 150 feet?
Chairman, Commissioner Blau, the 150 feet is just the narrowest point of the lot.
Right.
And that's just, I just, that's for informational purposes.
Okay.
The requirements speak to an average. So the average is 200. The minimum average required is 210.
Okay. And that probably was arrived by the fact that an acre is 209 by 209, and that's how they got the 210, right? So it's kind of arbitrary. They didn't grab the number. They kind of did a calculation. It's the square root of a close acre of land, but...
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other, I just have a question real quick, Mr. Eric. This one just struck me, and I, this looks like the lot line here cuts right through what appears to be another paddock area.
Yes.
So they must have some type of understanding, because I don't see a fence there or some kind of delineation, but they, they have some kind of relationship with that neighbor that allows for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And they have a very good relationship. This is a neighborhood where everybody cooperates and people are, very easily talk to each other and work these things out.
But there is no fence that follows that lot line or proposed or...
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. I don't think I had any additional questions. Any other commissioners having questions? Did Mr. Daniels wish to speak to the issue at all, or...
Only when we get to the conditions. He has one comment to offer on the proposed conditions.
I think that's okay, that we'll do it that way then. So we'll bring it back to the commission. If there are any further questions for staff or for council with regard to this issue? If not, Commissioner Cooney, I think this is a first district issue. We would...
Oh.
Do you want to discuss, he wants to discuss the conditions?
Now's the time for the...
Now would be the time. It's the tie, Brent.
I just wanted to see it again. Thank you, Chair. One comment on the conditions, and I think we can resolve this relatively quickly, if you will indulge me. It's the condition with respect to landscape within the tentative parcel map condition.
It's condition 13 on page C5.
Thank you, Mrs. Black. Condition 13 states, "The landscape plan shall..." Well, as you have read the staff report, you understand that, you know, we have an obligation to have a tenant improvement internal to the existing guest house to plug in a kitchen. Or I should say, yeah, plug in a kitchen, plug in appliances in order to make it a single-family residence. And we will do that through a conditional or a coastal development permit. But we didn't have any intention of doing anything with respect to a landscape plan. If this is, if this particular condition is with respect to future development, I would offer additional language. If the commission doesn't think it's necessary at all, I would ask that it be deleted. With respect to additional language, maybe this particular condition could start off with, "For any future projects that require C-bar, a landscape plan shall be submitted." And those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Black, do you want to...
Mr. Chair, I think that's consistent with the intent. The intent was to place conditions in the event that the site was redeveloped, essentially.
Okay. So that means we facilitate his recommendations, or we interpret them to be consistent with his concern?
Mr. Chair, it's always, I always like to err on clarity, so I would suggest including his language.
Including his language.
Question. If he were to do a major redevelopment, would he be subject to C-bar anyway, by the zoning?
Yeah. S-bar.
S-bar, excuse me. Then it seems to me that we just could delete the condition, because the S-bar would take a look at the landscaping as part of the S-bar or not?
I think there are a couple of conditions that are included here. And there's a condition that actually requires SBAR review, this area in and of its, it doesn't have an overlay. There's no specific requirement for BAR review. The environmental document included a mitigation measure requiring architectural review for any new structures. I think the purpose of this condition is to guide the landscaping toward drought-tolerant landscaping, not really for the S-bar review. But, so I think the purpose of the condition really was to talk about the type of landscaping. Yes, it would require S-bar review in any event.
You know, just a comment, Chairman. I'd be much happier if we do it in the condition entirety. I especially don't like the issue where the monitoring, where there's, where prior to occupancy clearance, we're going to have the landscaping installed. I mean, it's not unusual for someone to occupy this house, do their own landscaping after they've started to live in the house. So I would just as soon let the condition be out. If it has to have S-bar anyway, then they can deal with the landscape requirements when they receive a plan.
Okay. I think we'll hold the concept in abeyance, but Ms. Black, just from my understanding, it would be possible to integrate Mr. Daniels' language if we retained it. We can contemplate the elimination of the condition, as Commissioner Blau suggested, but that may be in the hands of the maker of the motion. So I think at this juncture, we'll continue. And I see Commissioner Valencia, you would like to speak to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Briggs? Mr. Briggs, there were some concerns about traffic and road safety, and I noticed there aren't any comments in the document concerning that. Could you give us some information concerning the road? Apparently, there's some problems.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Valencia, I can't speak to the history of the accidents or the technical levels of safety to the road, but I have driven the road. It is one lane on each side. It does have blind curves. The shoulders of the road are heavily landscaped. You know, it kind of gives you that tunnel effect a little bit in certain places, so I can understand why neighbors would be concerned about additional traffic on the road.
Do you think the additional 10 car would create a major problem if that limit...
To clarify, it's, no, I don't believe so.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On that manner, Mr. Briggs, the additional traffic as foreseen in the application and the negative declaration do not cross any specific threshold that would require additional work on our part. Is that what, I mean, that's the way I'm interpreting.
Chairman Jackson, you are correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, we don't have anybody here from transportation, but they have reviewed the application. They did not raise any issues with regard to line of sight traffic issues that would be associated with this pretty modest increase.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for staff? Not seeing any. Commissioner Cooney, this is in your district. Do you wish to proceed in some fashion?
Yes, I would like to suggest just a couple of thoughts and then defer to the rest of the commissioners to see if there's agreement or disagreement. I took a close look at this property after visiting the area, because, and I might indicate that the Fishman project located next door to the project right in this area is one that was before the commission within the last couple of years. And Mr. Vanderkar was very helpful in that project in reminding us of the concern for the interface with agricultural and residential uses. And we certainly took that into account on the approval there. But with regard to this neighborhood, it looks similar to other areas of the county where there's quite a bit of space between residences. But in fact, it's, these homes are relatively close together, and although they've done a great job with landscaping to screen from one another, the homes are in close proximity. And I was impressed by the fact that there is a spider web of little private driveways going throughout the area. And as you have heard, there is a common access point from, from the main road, from Shepherd Mesa Road, right about here. It drives up between this twin row of cypress trees, I believe. All the mailboxes are right in this area. And I took a good look. The sightline for exit and entry to the driveway is about as good as any place along Shepherd Mesa Road. In fact, it's better than most. You can actually see in both directions. And I left my car here, ready to enter Shepherd Mesa for a couple of minutes, and when a car finally came up, I was able to see it way down in this area, and so would have plenty of time to gauge my move onto the main road. What I was more concerned about was the common use of these driveways and the impact to the people sharing the common driveways of an additional potential residence. Now, there were definitely people using the guest house at this point. I saw three cars parked adjacent to the guest house. And so I suspect there's a lot of traffic being generated from that particular structure right now, and that merely dividing the lot legally would not increase the amount of traffic. legally would not increase the amount of traffic as a practical matter to the neighbors. And I think that is borne out by the significant number of letters expressing non-objection to the lot split. The most important of which I felt were the Fishman's here immediately next door, whose driveway goes out this way and intersects the driveway coming from the Flannery property. And the Neffs, who we've heard from today and might be interested in the result because of the benefit to their property. But also, this property here, Kavanaugh property, is reached by a common driveway that drives directly in front of the Flannery guest house and comes around down in this direction. And I would think if anybody would be concerned about additional development in this area, it would be the residents of this area. But they expressed that they were not concerned about that. There were two objectors who wrote and spoke today. Mr. Sullivan's house is up in this area, I believe, and Mr. Van de Car's home is right here. He does not share these driveways, I don't believe. Is this your driveway, Mr. Van de Car? Okay. So he does. So we're all reaching a common point here, and to the degree that these properties are sharing that driveway, they do so pursuant to a series of easements. In the deed to Ms. Flannery, there are four easement parcels described. So her property is accessed over a number of easements, and of course, we, in our land use decisions, don't get into private civil matters, but if there is an overburdening issue, the landowners can take that up. With regard, though, to the other issues, I was very concerned about the interface of the agricultural property owned or operated by Mr. Van de Car. And for that reason, it was very important to me that there can be no residential development in this steeply sloping area adjacent to the agriculture. So I felt comfortable that even in... If eventually a project is developed in this area on either parcel, that would be within county-permitted guest house or single-family residence. It could take place in this area without impact to the agriculture, without significant impact. So for those reasons, I couldn't find the usual reasons why I would object to additional development in what is already a fairly intensively developed area. The one issue left is the fact that a variance is being sought for the average width of the parcel. And seen from above, as we do here, we can see both of these parcels will be fairly long and narrower than the county ordinances provide. So a variance is necessary. And I think the reason that we have heard from Mr. Briggs as to other parcels in the neighborhood receiving consideration for being below the 210-foot average width is with regard to the variance finding. We can't grant a variance unless we find that there's no special privilege being granted to the applicant by giving the variance. So it is necessary to show that a substantial number of others in the neighborhood benefit from the same narrowing of the lot line average width. And I think it was not only important but crucial that we get that information. So it's not a matter of two wrongs making a right. It's a matter of an applicant's proposal being fit into an existing landscape. So at this point, I would not find that average width issue to be sufficient to overcome the ability to split the lots, and would like to hear from the rest of you if there's any disagreement.
Okay. Commissioner Blau.
I have no disagreement, and as I said before, I'm always curious as to how the county comes up with the standard. Why would you pick 210 feet? I mean, you pick... Typically, you would pick a more average width. I'm only guessing it's 210 feet because an acre is 209.38, I think, by 209 feet. So they rounded up at 10 because they like to be a little bit square. I also would defy anybody to stand across the street and tell me whether the lot's 210 feet wide or 200 feet wide. So for me, I don't have a problem with it. I'm glad that the rest of the neighborhood's got the same configuration, but I could deviate 10 feet without it. So I'm prepared to support the project.
Okay. Who would like to go next at this point? Commissioner Valencia?
Mr. Chair, I don't see... I don't have any problems with a project. I mean, if it was a high-dense area, I might have some concerns, but it's so sparse that I don't see any major problem. I was concerned about the traffic because of what was brought up, but it appears that that isn't a major problem. You just have to be careful in those little rural roads. So I'm prepared to support the project as it stands.
Okay. For myself, I was concerned until... Quite frankly, Mr. Commissioner Cooney's language with regard to the width discussion was really good. That was a concern of mine, and I particularly liked the way you put that. That was... Not that Mr. Briggs didn't do a good job, but the preponderant element of your remarks helped me to get across that threshold. What I do find is that the openness in here and expressed through a lot of these places softened the blow for me. I'm in favor of the project. It makes sense. It seems to correct more than it endangers, so I would be supporting it. So at this point, I believe we're prepared for a motion.
All right. Mr. Chair, I would make a motion. We have two different projects before us, and staff has made recommendations with regard to both. I think we should probably vote separately on the first, the lot line adjustment. I'm not sure. Mr. Briggs, did you put these together or did you separate them? I'm trying to see in your...
Chairman, Commissioner Cooney, I think we want to do these together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cooney, that being the case, did you want to address the condition that Mr. Daniels made?
Yes, I would... I will be... My motion is to follow staff's recommendation for this project, to approve it in accordance with the language set forth on page two and three of our staff report, with the modification to condition number 14 in the tentative parcel map discussion... 13, that is, period on page C5, to incorporate the concept that this architectural review of the landscape plan would be as to future development, not as to conforming the existing guest house to a single-family residence.
Okay. Commissioner Blau?
I'm just curious how Commissioner Cooney feels about the last sentence and not the monitoring. Do you agree that that should be deleted in this case?
I don't have a problem deleting it. I don't think it's significant in this case. However, I feel very strongly the future landscaping, along with any future construction, needs to be reviewed, and that we should continue to support water-conserving landscaping. So I'd like the rest of the language to be involved.
Great.
We could modify the monitoring provision just to put minimal impact on the developer in this case.
There needs to be, Mr. Chair, some timing for the monitoring per SEQA.
Well, can we not modify the monitoring provision so that basically it provides for assurance that it's approved by BAR and that's the end of the process?
Ms. Black, would you like to help us with this?
Mr. Chair, I think there's two provisions in the condition right now. One is review and approval by SBAR, and the other is timing of actual installation. And I'm fine with modifying the prior to occupancy clearance. I don't have a problem with that. It just seems like there should be some timing. Otherwise, it's an unenforceable condition.
Give it a year, be fine.
Within a year.
A year of occupancy. Perfect.
Is the maker of the motion satisfied with that?
I am. That's fine.
Okay. We have a motion. It requires a second. I'll entertain a second.
I'll second it.
All right. I have a second motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Oplin.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Vote carries 4-0.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think it would be prudent we take our lunch break until 1:00 and handle our next two items at that point, so 1:00 o'clock. All righty. Thank you.
The following is the hearing on the request of the property owner, Mr. David Garrity, to consider the appeal number 08, APL 12, application filed on March 14, 2008, and to accept the exemption pursuant to section 15270 of the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA. And...
Should I read both?
I'm going to read the second one also into the record. The following is the hearing on the request of the property owner, Mr. David Garrity, to consider case number 07, AMD 4, application filed on March 23, 2007, and to accept the exemption pursuant to section 15270 of the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Okay. And we're ready for a staff report. I'll ask at this point if there are any ex parte communication reports or site visits. Commissioner Valencia?
Site visits, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
I also visited the site.
Okay. I have visited the site, too. Seeing no more lights, we'll move into our staff report, and if we'll introduce the planner. I don't believe I've met this gentleman.
Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to introduce to you Jay Ritterbeck of our staff. He's actually been with us for over a year, two years, a year and a half, and just hasn't had the opportunity to come to your commission. He goes frequently before the Montecito Planning Commission. He's on our primarily ministerial team, and he's going to be presenting the Garrity appeals to you, and we're going to do one joint presentation. We'll ask you to take action on the BAR case first, but I think it's more efficient and makes more sense just to conduct this as one presentation.
Okay. Jessica, can you dim the lights for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Jay Ritterbeck. I'm the planner for the Garrity projects. Project site is located at 6559 Segovia Road in the Isla Vista area. The site is a 0.48-acre parcel located at the corner of Segovia Road and Embarcadero Del Mar. Parcel is currently zoned SRH 20 and is rezoned to MRD 35 within the Isla Vista Master The applicant is proposing to construct a new two-bedroom addition to an existing seven-bedroom multi-unit dwelling. All-new development proposed within the Isla Vista area is subject to both Article II and Isla Vista Master Plan development standards. Before the commission today are two agenda items related to the same project. The first is an appeal by the applicant of BAR's denial of the proposed development based upon the board's inability to make the required findings for approval, specifically as they relate to neighborhood compatibility. The second is an amendment to a previously approved development plan to allow the construction of a new 775-square-foot two-bedroom addition, an approval of a reconfigured parking area that would accommodate both new and relocated required parking spaces. Again, action on the appeal is required prior to any action on the associated amendment. The proposed project received preliminary review from BAR on March 14, 2008, where the following comments were made. Architecturally, the building needed stylistic direction, needed to be integrated and balanced... The addition needed to be integrated and balanced with the existing building. Details needed to be worked out, and that the fence was visually hostile and must be altered or integrated into the neighborhood. The BAR suggested either removal or lowering. The applicant did not wish to redesign the project based upon BAR's comments. Because the BAR could not make the required findings for approval, the project was subsequently denied by a 4-0 vote based on neighborhood incompatibility. The project site is located on a corner lot, and as such, is subject to two 20-foot front setbacks, a 25-foot rear setback, and a 10-foot side setback. The previous development plan approved in 2005 allowed modifications to these setback standards as part of the project, legalizing all previously unpermitted development. Currently, the site is developed with two multi-unit dwellings that are 2,800 square feet each, and both contain seven bedrooms. These photos show a street-level view of the property looking south from Segovia Road at the two existing dwellings. Approved parking includes 28 residential spaces. As a component of the previous development plan, spaces number 1, 25, and 28 were allowed to encroach up to three feet into the 20-foot front setback, and spaces number 8 through 16 and 26 were allowed to encroach up to nine feet into the 10-foot side setback. Total of five required spaces, numbers 17, 24 through 17... I'm sorry. Number 17 and 24 through 27 were either never installed or not properly maintained since the 2005 approval. These photos show a view of the existing parking area with a mixture of both formal and informal parking areas being used. Approved landscaping for the site included formalized grassy areas and the planting of no fewer than 10 landscaped trees, of which only one was planted currently exists on the site today. In this one right here. The existing six-foot-tall redwood perimeter fence currently extends entirely into the county right-of-way along Embarcadero Del Mar. This fence was required to be removed from the county right-of-way as part of the approved development plan. As of today, this fence has not been removed. These photos show the existing fence extending into the county right-of-way along Embarcadero and immediately adjacent to the sidewalk along both Embarcadero and Segovia. The proposed development includes a new two-bedroom addition, a total of 32 residential parking spaces, a total of 16 covered and 16 uncovered bicycle parking spaces, a relocated curb cut for the Segovia entrance, and a six-foot-tall redwood screening fence located on the property line along Embarcadero and Segovia. This slide shows both the northern elevation of the proposed addition as it would be seen from inside the fence along Segovia Road, and below is a view of the southern elevation. This slide shows both the east elevation of the proposed addition as would be seen from the parking area within the property, and below is a view of the western elevation. BAR's denial of the proposed development and the subsequent denial recommendation by PND staff is based upon the project's inconsistency with policies of the county's comprehensive plan, including the coastal land use plan and the GLIDA community plan policies and goals, specifically as they relate to site design and neighborhood compatibility. In this slide, I've compiled a sequence of street-level photos of the immediate neighborhood in the vicinity of the proposed project to highlight a number of good examples of site design and landscaping within the Isla Vista area within recent years that improve the overall appearance and quality and character of the community. And finally, Mr. Garrity's property. Within the Isla Vista Master Plan, all new development will fall into one of three housing types, all of which are subject to both general design standards as well as specific development standards associated with that housing type. The current project falls into the large home housing type. Upon review, staff identified that the proposed project is inconsistent with the following general development standards. Minimum finished floor height, what is required is two feet above the elevation of the adjacent Minimum windowsill height, what is required is five feet, six inches above elevation of the adjacent sidewalk. Staff also identified that the proposed project was inconsistent with the following development standards specific to the large home housing type. Street-facing entrances, what is required is that the porch or stoop be a minimum of seven feet wide and three feet deep. What is proposed is four feet by three and a half feet. Building depth, is a maximum of 60 feet in depth is allowed, and the building facade would be a maximum of 40 feet in depth. What's proposed is 73 feet and 53 feet. When reviewing the project against both current zoning standards for the SRH 20 Zone District and the zoning standards for the MRD 35 Zone District, the following inconsistencies were identified. Although previously approved within the setback, these 10 spaces would not be in compliance with current standards. The proposed eight compact parking spaces located within the side setback extend past the previously approved and modified setback and up to the edge of the property and would not be compliant with current standards. The proposed six-foot screening fence not only extends, exceeds the allowable height standard at both entrances and exits, but BAR found its overall height and composition incompatible with the existing neighborhood. In addition, the six-foot fence creates a public safety issue in that it limits access and visibility into the site. Lieutenant Brian Olmstead from the County Sheriff's Department and Isla Vista Foot Patrol is available today to address any questions related to these issues.
I think he's in Santa Maria. There was somebody in Santa Maria.
In summary, and as discussed in detail within the staff reports, significant redesign of the proposed project would be required in order to be found consistent with all applicable comprehensive plan policies, as well as all applicable Isla Vista Master Plan design standards and zoning requirements, and zoning requirements within Article Two Coastal Zoning Ordinance. Upon review, staff recommends that the commission adopt the required findings for denial of the appeal of BAR's action as specified in attachment A, accept the CEQA exemption as specified in attachment B, deny 08 Appeal 12. Subsequently, after action has been taken on the appeal, and if that action is for denial, staff recommends that the commission also adopt the required findings for denial of the development plan amendment as specified in attachment A, accept the CEQA exemption as specified in attachment B, and deny 07 AMD 4. Alternatively, please refer to staff if the commission takes other than the recommended actions. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, are there any commissioner questions for staff with regard to the staff Seeing none, I believe we have an applicant here who's prepared to make a presentation. I need to know how much time it is you feel you'll need. Okay, I'm going to grant you five. But you do need to go to the, oh, can he, does he need to go to the podium or can he do it from there?
Mr. Chair, if he's comfortable at the podium, the camera can get you better, but if you're more comfortable there, just flip the switch down and that's fine as well.
Just go from here.
But if you do, you've got to talk close enough so we can hear you.
You got it. Let me know if you can't hear me. My name is David Garrity and I'm the, I have the appeal referring to section 3577.3 Processing. It says, "No permits for development, including grading, shall be issued in conformance with an approved final development plan as provided in section 35174 Development Plans and section 35169 Coastal Development Permits with exclusion of single-family and duplex family dwelling units." So, my point with this is that it should never have been required to have, it should never have been required to have a development plan. This, the process has taken place here, is not required, and it's been overdone. I don't think that this permit is required this way. It says, "No permits for development, including grading, shall be issued in conformance with an approved, except in conformance with an approved development plan as provided in section 35174 Development Plans and with section 35169 Coastal Development Permits with the exclusion of single-family and duplex family dwelling units." I have two single-family dwelling units here, and they are, so a development plan is not required for this, or any of my permits. And my prior development plan was processed in error by the county. And I would like to have a ruling that I do have two single-family dwelling units that are not, that are not required to have a development plan, and also I'm going to withdraw my, my application to have any building on this site at this point and just have it approved as existing, and see if we can clean this up and call it a day.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Blau?
Not for the applicant at the moment, no.
Okay, perhaps we'll, we will proceed as efficiently as we can, given the circumstances, because we will need a time for public comment. What I'm going to suggest now is, I don't see anyone seeking public comment on this issue at this time. And I don't see anybody running up to the desk. So, what I will do is bring it back to the commission. I'm going to try to work with some flexibility here, perhaps to address what the applicant has said or requested. I'll begin with Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There were some comments made here by the applicant, and is there going to be a response to that? That's what I want to know. Either planner or Mr. Einmoff or...
Mr. Chair, commissioners, I believe Mr. Garrity is referring to 01 DVP 39, which was required to legalize the two, there's two separate structures on this parcel. A CDP would be, would be required for a duplex and for a single-family. He has two, essentially two, single families, although they're subdivided and, not subdivided, they are being used as multi-unit dwellings. They are essentially two single-family dwellings on one parcel, so that's why it required a development plan. There was a significant amount of alter, internal alteration, conversions of the garages to additional bedrooms that all needed to be legalized, and in order to be able to grant certain allowances to permit those alterations to have been done, a development plan was the necessary route. Development plan allows you to modify certain standards as a part of that approval. That's why all previous unpermitted development was approved via that development plan. The encroachment into setbacks, the parking allowed into setbacks, there were density issues, all that were addressed as part of that development plan.
Ms. Black.
Mr. Chair, I guess what I wanted to comment on, I think Jay is correct, that a development plan is the proper path for this particular case, and in fact, that's how your commission reviewed this case back in July of 2005. If the applicant chooses not to go forward with the plans that he's presented and that we've analyzed, that's fine. But there are a number of issues that will need to be remedied on the site because the site is not consistent with the approved development plan as it exists today.
So, if I were to paraphrase...
But we would deal with that as a department. We would deal with compliance issues with that plan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but I think I heard the applicant withdraw his appeal today. Is that correct?
No, I'm withdrawing my attempt to build an addition, the two bedrooms there. I still would like to file an appeal, I would still like to file an amendment to my development plan, and that will be a two-part amendment. One is to have the conversion back to two single-family dwellings, to two single-family homes, which is what it is, which complies with the section, and to have a ruling that this in fact does comply with the rules, because I've had an extended fight with planning and development about whether a development plan is required or not. And I think that the commission needs to look at this and decide whether two houses in Isla Vista require a development plan, because I don't think that when the board passed these laws, that they had any intention that two houses would require a development plan. The type of development that's going on in Isla Vista is huge, 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 huge. And when somebody wants to move a tree, which is what I'm talking about doing, or move some fencing, the idea that I should have to come in front of the board to move a fence five or 10 feet is, you know, I mean, the cost to submit for a development plan, I think at this point, is $5,000. So, for me to move my fence at all, I have to submit a permit, a $5,000 permit, or if I want to move a tree. And when you've got two houses, that's not what's expected for a, to have, to do a development plan for two houses. And PND is kind of dancing around this idea, oh, well, he added a couple of bedrooms and so he needed to get a development plan. Well, that was what they forced me to do. I mean, they truly forced me to do it. I was in planning and development for years, and they wouldn't process my permit. Not only would they not process it, they wouldn't deny it because they said I had no path. So, they wouldn't give me a denial, they wouldn't give me an approval. And then after being in planning and development for two or three years and spending thousands of dollars with planning and development, I just went ahead and I added the bedrooms and figured, hey, when they get around to dotting their Ts and giving me the permit, they'll do it. And then they came back after they had inspected it the first time, and I didn't have any problems. Then they came back and they said, oh, well, now you've done it, so now, you know, you've got something that's illegal. But the case is that I didn't do anything until long after I had already submitted my first permit. I had that permit and was requesting it for years, and it spent thousands and thousands of dollars. And I spent over $10,000 in planner fees, planner hours, and I'm not talking about all of planning and development. I mean, it cost me like over $15,000 for my last permit to convert a two-car garage into two bedrooms. I mean, this permit itself has cost me another, like what, $5,000 at least in just permit fees. And I'm talking about adding two bedrooms, which at this point, I'm giving up, but I just want to make it back to get a ruling that I don't have to go through a development plan every time I want to do something small. This is a huge site, it's a huge site, and in Isla Vista, on sites like this, they're building like, what, 35 units? And they're providing no parking nowadays. I've got all this parking, I'm doing very minor stuff, and I have to jump through tremendous hoops, and I'm going to be back, I'm going to be back here again, I'm sure, in the not-too-distant future if a development plan is required. I mean, it's just going to, you know, because anything I do, I have to come back here. If I want to move a fence, if I want to move a tree, I've got to spend $5,000 for a permit to move this stuff. And so what I really want to do is, I mean, frankly, had I known you guys were going to go out there, I would have cleaned up the site. You know, there are college kids that live out there. I don't know what it looked like, but that's probably, you know, what it looks like a lot of the time. They have parties, they like to have a yard, they want to be able to do things, they want to be able to throw a football around, and I don't think that's unreasonable to have that type of an area for them to play in. I don't think it's unreasonable to have a fence. Most of my neighbors, all the way around, have got the same type of fence, or worse. They've got chain-linked fences. I mean, if there's a vine, I try, you know, if there's some minor stuff to do, I'm happy to do it. But I really want to keep this easy, and I don't want to have to keep coming back here all the time, and I'm going to have to. I mean, if every time a development plan is required, then I got to come back here for some very, very small things. And then I got to, you know, come here and then go to the board of supervisors. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of stuff here. It's a, what, 775 square feet or something like that that I was talking about building, and now I'm willing to walk away from it, but I just want to have it so I don't have to come back. I mean, it says processing. "No permits for development, including grading, shall be issued except in conformance with an approved final development plan." So, everything needs one, as provided in section 35174 Development Plans and with section 35169 Coastal Development Permits. But here's the thing...
Okay, yeah, that's the part you, that's the part you read.
Let me, I'm almost done with the last sentence. Please, can I just finish the last sentence?
All right.
With the exclusion of single-family and duplex family units.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney, your light is lit. Do you want to start?
Well, I don't want to comment on Mr. Garrity's comments, except for the very first indication that, that he is no longer interested in processing an application with regard to the two additional bedrooms. As I understand it, there are two different applications before us. One is an appeal of the BAR's review of that bedroom addition, so I take his comments to be a withdrawal of that appeal. If that's the case, we need to clarify that because we shouldn't take action if that appeal is being withdrawn. The second issue with regard to the development plan and the appropriateness of its use, I'm not sure is before us today, but even if it is, I'd want county council to have an adequate opportunity to determine whether the development plan is appropriate for this site. And, you know, in terms of other actions available to the county for existing zoning violations, I'm sure those can be pursued without this commission's assistance. So, it's more a question of process. Where are we? Where do we go from here?
Ms. Black.
I'm not sure, Mr. Chair and commissioners, I'm not sure I quite understand what the applicant is intending to do today. If he's intending to withdraw his appeal of the BAR decision and withdraw his request for the addition, then I know where we need to go. And then we need to leave this hearing room, because he's essentially withdrawn his request and deal with this as an enforcement issue. But I heard something slightly different, which was, I don't want to build the addition to the house, but I want the commission to legalize everything else. And if that's where he's at, then I don't think it's, then I don't think he's really withdrawing his appeals, his appeal or his development plan amendment.
That is the case. I'm not withdrawing my appeal. What I'm doing is I'm modifying it and cutting it...
Sir, you need to go through the chair, so he needs to recognize you.
Okay, I want you to finish.
So, Mr. Chair, I guess if it's something other than what we've analyzed before us, for you today, then we need to have an understanding of that, and then I can help you decide if we can continue to discuss it today or if we need some additional time to analyze his request.
Before I go to the applicant, I'm going to come back to you in a sec. I don't hear what I read as being discussed. And from what I hear from you, either we get a body of an application that is within our jurisdiction and in our purview, or we deal with what we have. And before I come to the applicant, it sounds to me like, I don't know, I don't know where we are. So, I think you're, I'm going to want to follow your, or suggest that we follow your lead, but Commissioner Blau?
Mr. Chair, it's apparent to me that the staff is not prepared to discuss what the applicant's asking for, because I think this is the first time he's asked for it. So, I'm going to propose that we continue this to some date certain in the future, giving the applicant and the staff an opportunity to try and work this out, and if they can, they can bring it back to us. If they can't, he can drop it with a draw. If they can't, he can drop it with the draw. But what he's asking for is nothing that the staff is prepared to discuss, and they have prepared nothing for us on that issue. So I think we could stop this meeting right now, continue it to a date certain, and let those issues get vetted out. So I'm going to make a motion that we continue this, and I'll ask Ms. Black to help me pick a date.
I concur with the assessment of the situation, and I would like a little more feedback from Ms. Black, if that is indeed a viable solution that, or response. And Commissioner Cooney, are you willing to weigh in on that?
Yeah, just one additional detail. We do have a representative from the Isla Vista Foot Patrol that I think the testimony would be helpful with regard to certain aspects of the development as it exists now. And since that may be unavailable to us at a future hearing, I'd like to get that testimony before us, assuming the matter's not entirely withdrawn, which I don't think it is, even if we're going to do a continuance.
Okay, I would like to work that in. Commissioner Blau, do you have another comment at this point?
No, I'll let my motion-
It's not going to die yet until I-
I'll withdraw pending the testimony of the officer, and then I'll make it again when that's over with.
Okay. Ms. Black, I'm uncomfortable that we're going in a direction that it may not be helping. Is it okay to go that way? All right, then what I would like to do is invite the testimony, stay where you are, and from that point forward, we will, again, take up where we are. So, Mr. Olmstead, I believe you're here, and we'd like to avail ourselves of what you have to share with us at this time, rather than bring you back on another occasion.
I don't mind coming back, sir, another day.
But it may inform us at this point as well. I thank you for that, though.
Oh, okay. Would you like me just to give an input?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, basically, we're always looking at ways to improve Isla Vista, and through the report that you have, I believe it has different calls for service at the properties in question, and we're concerned, one of the concerns we have is the fence, because a lot of people, like the applicant talked about, a lot of people out in Isla Vista like to throw large parties, and the fence, that's, the way the fence is right now, it's really hard to view into and see in it. It almost encourages underage drinking, since Isla Vista does have a large problem with underage drinking out in the area. And so one of the concerns, just the visibility of the fence, and adding any other residence or any other space for people to live in also brings, exacerbates the problem on the amount of parties that are there. And then the parking issues, and the lack of parking, the serious problem in parking that we do have out in Isla Vista area.
Okay, are there any questions for Commissioner Blau? No.
No.
Okay, I thank you for that input. If there are any other-
Could we have, Mr. Chair, could we have him identify himself and his rank and who he works for?
Oh, sure.
Oh, sorry. My name's Brian Olmstead. I'm a lieutenant with the Sheriff's Department and also the station commander for Isla Vista Foot Patrol.
Thank you very much. Okay, I thank you as well, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Blau.
Just making my motion for a continuance, and I'm hoping for Ms. Black to help me with a date that's appropriate.
Mr. Chair, I'm not quite sure how long the parties will need, but I would suggest November 5th would probably be the earliest point where the parties might be ready.
November 5th is the date I was going to move into.
Okay, Commissioner Valencia?
I have a question, Mr. Chair, before we go into the motion, is, I want to be absolutely sure on the appeal, you want to withdraw your appeal to the applicant?
If I could comment, Mr. Commissioner Valencia, I don't think he knows. That's part of it. We don't know where we're going with this.
So I want to make sure if I vote on your motion or not, so I want to know where he's at, whether he wants to. There's been two things, he said he wanted to withdraw, then he said he wanted to modify it, and I don't know what the story is on the appeal now, and I want to know from him.
Okay, and the only caution I would have is that I don't think he or the staff knows, and if we continue everything, they can make that decision over the next couple of weeks.
Well, I want to hear it from him. Do you want to withdraw, or do you want to modify? What is it that you want to do?
Thank you for asking me.
Couple of words.
Thank you for asking me, I really appreciate you allowing me some input. I would actually prefer, I'm looking to modify it, and I would actually like, if I had my choice, I would rather have a vote today and a possible denial, rather than have to postpone it to another hearing.
No discussion, just the answer. And then the addition, you want to withdraw it or let it go?
The addition itself, I'm going to let go, but that is not to say that I'm not-
You want us to deal with it?
Yeah, you're going to have to deal with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, know where we're at now.
Okay.
I'm prepared to second the motion to continue the matter.
All right, we have a motion, and I believe we now have a second. I have heard the applicant and heard what he's expressed, and I still feel a continuance is really the only way to drill down on exactly what is being asked and what will be achieved. So unless there are any further discussion, we have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Valencia?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I just want to make sure that the motion is only dealing with the appeal and nothing else, just item number five.
And I appreciate-
No, it's dealing with both issues.
Both?
It's just like this hearing's going to start brand-new-
Well, he indicated that he wanted us to deal with that other one, with number six now.
Mr. Chair, if I could maybe help, I don't think there's a way for the commission to take action on item number six without first dealing with item number five, because the BAR denied the, BAR, you know, denied the project through the BAR review process. So you have to first do something with that appeal before you can take action on the actual development that's embodied in item number six.
And-
So if you're going to continue item number five, I think that it follows that you must continue item number six as well.
My motion was to continue both items. We were hearing it was a single item, so.
And I feel that is prudent, so is there any additional discussion? We have a motion to continue both items until November 5th. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Opeland.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
No.
Vote carries three to zero, three to one, sorry.
Okay, I think this is the best way to solve this issue. So we will take five minutes before we set up our next break. I mean, we'll take five minutes for a break before we set up our next item. And Ms. Opeland, if you'll read our last item into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The county planning commission will receive a briefing on state water, which will include, one, a brief history of the SWP and local involvement, two, project facilities, three, local supply and reliability of SWP, and four, current exchange and baking projects.
Okay, thank you very much. Greetings and welcome.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Matt Nafteley, I'm the interim Water Agency Manager, and I'm going to be talking about state water, but there's also some slides on the Kachuma Project, if there's time and if the commission desires. I also would point out that William Brennan, who's the executive director of the CCWA, is here also, and he's the guy with the real knowledge on state water, and so will be available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Can we dim the lights just a second?
Just to give a little history on the state water project, in 1960, California approved construction of the state water project facilities, and in 63, Santa Barbara County contracted to purchase state water, even though there was no facilities through which to receive it. There were costs associated with the design and building and maintenance of the backbone facilities which go through the center of California. In 1978, Santa Barbara County voted down a bond measure for the construction of the state water project facilities. And in 1982, the Flood Control District entered into water supply retention agreements, which shifted the financial responsibility from the county taxpayers to the purveyor ratepayers who were actually going to receive the state water. And in 1991, at the end of prolonged drought from '86 to '91, voters supported a measure to connect to the existing state water facilities and to finance the construction of local delivery facilities. At that time, the Central Coast Water Authority was formed to design, build, operate, and maintain those local facilities. In 1997, state water was actually received in the county. Some of the major project facilities statewide include Lake Orville, 660 miles of canals and pipelines, Sacramento Delta, and a complex of pumps and regulating reservoirs. This shows some of the facilities throughout the state, with Lake Orville up in the north, the delta, and then down below, the coastal branch, which actually brings water into the local area. This is more of a close-up of the local facilities, and you can see the coastal branch is this dash blue line, it brings water through San Luis Obispo and into Santa Barbara County, and the CCWA extension brings water through the county, and several agencies receive water from that pipeline. It terminates at Lake Kachuma, and from there, water is delivered to the South Coast through the Teclo de Tunnel and the South Coast Conduit, which also distributes Kachuma water. This shows all of the state water project contractors throughout the state, and it's notable that Santa Barbara County is surrounded by other counties that are contractors, because that becomes important for flexibility. Some of the environmental considerations having to do mostly with the delta include fish species, and some of these are endangered, such as the delta smelt. And salinity is an issue as well. Sources of salinity include the ocean water intrusion and diversion of dilution water and agricultural runoff. Environmental mitigation has been part of the state water project since its inception, and a few of the ways that that's done are listed here, habitat enhancement and fish passage, water releases for fish, there have been fish hatcheries constructed, temperature control of released water for fish, and salinity control gates. As I mentioned, the Central Coast Water Authority was formed in 1991 to fund the delivery facilities, and it became the primary contracting entity with Santa Barbara County purveyors for state water. The county remains contractually obligated financially in case of a default, but there are provisions to have the purveyors cover each other before the county becomes liable. The local state water supply improves diversification of our water supplies, generally it improves water quality. It's used first to offset groundwater overdraft and to improve water quality. And I'll be talking about Table A, which is the maximum amount of state water that can be requested by the contracting entities when there's no shortage. This is actually Table A, and it shows there are 13 entities, not all of them are public, but these are the contracted amounts for each entity. The total is 39,078 acre feet. The outlook for state water in the next couple of years, statewide, the project is expected to deliver about 35% of that Table A amount, and that's due to a couple of very dry years. Locally, however, we are expecting this year to receive about 60% of Table A amounts, and that's due to some of the supplemental programs, which I'll talk about in a minute. In 2009, the initial allocation is 10 to 15%, and that's a very conservative estimate. It will be revised upward as the state begins to receive rainfall and a snowpack develops up north. As far as what Santa Barbara County receives in 2009, it depends largely on climate, but also on some of these supplemental programs that I will refer to. One of them is the Kern County Groundwater Banking. Essentially, this is transfer of 1,000 acre feet of Carpinteria's excess 2008 Table A amount to a groundwater bank in Kern County, and over the next five years, Carpinteria Valley Water District is entitled to return of half of that water. The project's exempt from SEQA and has already been approved by the Santa Barbara Board of Supervisors. Another program is the San Luis Obispo Water Exchange, and by this program, 5,000, up to 5,200 acre feet of unneeded San Luis Obispo state water is transferred to CCWA for use by its members. This agreement is for two years, and it can be done all through existing facilities for the state water project. SEQA documents were completed by San Luis Obispo, and this project also has already been approved by the Santa Barbara Board of Supervisors. This is how that San Luis Obispo water will be distributed, and you can see that not all of the state water contractors will be receiving it, but some will in varying amounts. And this is one way to look at state water reliability, and this is the percent of the Table A water that has been available since the project delivered water to Santa Barbara County. And you can see that in several years, 100% was available, some years have been less. This year is the lowest with less than 40%. This slide is probably a more realistic way of looking at state water reliability, and it shows the water available in relation to the amount of water taken. And you can see that since we've been receiving state water, there has in every case been more water available than has actually been taken by the locals, and that has to do with a lot of things, including conservation programs and the desire to use other sources. 2004 came pretty close. As far as the future and state water reliability, it will depend on several things, including climate change, endangered species, water demand throughout the state, operational changes to the program, and then facilities changes. Probably the biggest one there is the peripheral canal, which is under consideration to divert water around the Sacramento Delta. So that's the information on state water. We could pause here for questions, or I could go on to Kachuma as you desire.
Okay, at this point, are there any Commissioner questions at this point for staff at this point? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Matt, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name.
Nafteley.
Nafteley, Mr. Nafteley, why does the state in some areas get 35% and what, why is the county getting 59%? How do we get that extra 24%?
Sure, Willie.
Commissioner, my name is Bill Brennan, I'm the executive director for Central Coast Water Authority. The state this year committed to providing 35% of the Table A amounts to all of the 29 state water contractors. CCWA, however, has entered into additional programs to procure water from other sources, in particular, this year, the San Luis Obispo County Program, which- In particular, this year, the San Luis Obispo County Program, which allowed us to bring in some additional water. I think one of the most important aspects of tying into the state water project for Santa Barbara County is not the amount of water or the reliability that we get in any one year, but the fact that we are now tied into a statewide system and can acquire water from other sources to supplement our needs and increase our overall reliability.
And then my other question is, apparently Carpinteria can't bank its water. There's no place to put it, so they sell it, and then later on, they only get half of it back. Is that basically what's happening?
Carpinteria had some water that they were not going to use in this year, 2008. They had an opportunity to sell it to other water purveyors within the county. They elected instead to bank that water in the Central Valley. Groundwater banks are very expensive to build and operate and maintain. You've got to have a secure aquifer. It's got to be high water quality. You have to have pumps and wells to get water in and get water out. You have to be tied to the state water system, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of maintenance. It's very expensive to put one of these programs together. Just the environmental work alone on the one that Carpinteria got into cost, I think, on the order of about $500,000. So Carpinteria, instead of being a financial participant in this groundwater bank, elected to buy into it by allowing half of the water to stay with the owners of the bank.
So is that a wheeling process?
It is a wheeling process. We're directing that water into the Central Valley, and at Carpinteria's request, we'll direct half of that water back.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any additional questions, or where do we go from here?
I can also talk a little bit about the Kachuma Reservoir Project. As you're probably aware, Kachuma is the largest reservoir on the San Yenés River, and it's below Gibraltar and Jameson reservoirs, which spill into it. When it was originally built in 1956, it was earth-filled dam with four radial gates. Its capacity was a hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and nine acre feet at an elevation, water elevation of seven hundred and fifty. It's now at about a hundred and eighty-six thousand acre feet due to siltation. Water is delivered to the south coast through the Teca Lode Tunnel, which connects Kachuma to Galida, and then water is distributed from Galida to Carpinteria through the South Coast Conduit, along with the state water. At the time that it was built, the reservoir was a water supply reservoir only and with some recreational byproducts, but there was no allowance for flood control. Ninety percent of Kachuma water goes to the south coast. The remainder goes to San Yenés River Water District. About eighty percent of south coast, it makes up about eighty percent of the south coast water supply, and its annual yield is about twenty-five thousand seven hundred and fourteen acre feet. It's the lowest-cost water that we have access to at about a hundred dollars an acre foot wholesale. I'm not sure I mentioned state water costs between a thousand and eighteen hundred dollars an acre foot, depending on how far it needs to travel to its destination. This graph shows the distribution of Kachuma water, and you can see that Santa Barbara and Galida take the bulk of it, and San Yenés ID-1, Montecito, and Carpinteria each take about ten percent. This graph shows the storage in Kachuma since it was built in the fifties. The top of this graph is basically the full line, and at the top is annual rainfall. And you can see that after the eighty-six to ninety-one drought, the reservoir level was quite low. In fact, it's below fifty thousand acre feet. Since it was built, there's been a number of operational changes to the reservoir, including increase in maximum elevation, water releases for fish, and modified operations for flood The Steelhead Conservation Surcharge in 2004, gate extensions were added to the radial gates, which increased the allowable storage from seven hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty-three feet. That produced an extra nine thousand two hundred acre foot of additional storage, which is used to fulfill fish requirements, including migration, passage flows, and rearing habitat for Steelhead. The scenarios for when to begin surcharging into that three feet are under consideration for timing and safety, such as flood issues, flood control issues. Modified operations, the allowable operations have been modified to include a reduction of peak flows below Kachuma, and the procedure involves operating the gates so as to store additional water in the reservoir until the peak flows have passed. And the process requires the use of real-time rainfall and flow and reservoir data, as well as a computer simulation model. This graph shows that modified operations have been used successfully on multiple occasions. The 1969 part of the graph is theoretical. They weren't conducted at that time, but the yellow bar indicates what modified operations could have done, and the purple is what actually occurred. In 1998, both of those cases, this was the situation as it actually occurred, and the peak flows below the reservoir were reduced by about forty percent in those cases. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia?
Is the control of the gates there, is it a SCADA system that controls the flow and release on a real-time basis?
It's controlled by dam tenders by hand, actually.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And just curious for future, is there any plan to have some, like, hook dams or anything to hold water back on the San Yenés for percolation purposes?
Tom, do you?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, there are not. There are issues with dams downstream on live stream, especially where Steelhead are. I know there have been discussions of the rubber bladder inflatable dams at times. However, there's no project of that kind being proposed at this point. They normally try to regulate it by the outflow from Kachuma, so it's not wasted to the ocean, and that's how they would control it downstream.
About thirty years ago, we got permission to build some berms along the San Yenés in the Alhambuc area, and we borrowed some large bulldozers from Vanderburg. We built them up to hold the water it was going through, have to go through these berms, and that was successful until all the motorcycles got in there and tore them up. But the intent was that it would help water, hold back water and build ponds and help the thing percolate, but...
A similar project was done on the Santa Maria River in the 1940s as well.
Was it successful?
Yeah, it was to hold back, yeah.
Question. Essentially, from the volume of water stored at Kachuma, you've got a two percent reduction for siltation since 1956. Personally, that seems a little counterintuitive to me. I only have to look at the, along San Marcos Pass to know, is there any process that works to reduce siltation in that lake at this time?
Mr. Chair, doing the math off the top of my head, I don't believe two percent is accurate. If I'm reading this right, it's, we were originally two hundred and five, and we're down to one ninety.
It's had one ninety and down to one eighty-six.
And then went down to one eighty-six since its construction. So the change from the one ninety to the one eighty-six would be just over a couple of years, not its whole life. Maybe Matt could clarify that.
Yeah, I think there's an error in that slide in that when it was completed, it was at two hundred and five thousand acre foot capacity, and now it's down to a hundred and eighty-six.
So it's fallen roughly nineteen thousand, which is somewhere in the vicinity of four to five percent, or ten percent, excuse me, ten percent. Is there any removal of silt that ever takes place in there at all?
Mr. Chair, there is not for Kachuma, and I might mention also, Kachuma, that's actually a pretty good sedimentation rate for how long it's been in, almost fifty years now. And a lot of that is in thanks to Gibraltar, which is sediment, has received a lot of sedimentation over the years, and with the Zaca fire now even increased. There is no plan that I know of to remove sedimentation. Typically, what I recall hearing is the, a favored process is to actually increase the size of the dam, because if you increase the size of the dam by that much as removing the same amount over the whole lake, it's more cost-effective. There are technical issues with doing that and regulatory issues with doing that, but at this point, I don't believe there's any process in place that's going to remove the sedimentation. It's not viewed as critical. It's, the siltation is within the accepted range for a reservoir at this point.
Okay. One more question for you, sir. The thirty-five percent delivery number has gotten wide coverage. Your augmenting and the differential has not gotten as wide a coverage, and so quite frequently, we are reminded that you've only got thirty-five percent. And what do you do to promulgate a more accurate understanding from the population of what the actual water capacities are?
We do make that information available to the media, but sixty or so percent is really not as sexy a number when you're talking about drought as thirty-five percent. And so I think there's a natural media bias to not take into account some of the short-term operations. Next year, 2009, is shaping up to be a very difficult year for water, both north and south. DWR is not required by their contract to announce what their initial allocation is until December first of this year. However, in some of my trips up to Sacramento and talking with some of the staff, it's looking like the initial allocation is going to be somewhere in the range of about fifteen percent. And then we'll have to go from there, depending on snowpack and rainfall throughout the year to see how that increases. The governor is, has declared a drought. He's putting together a drought water bank for next year. Some of our staff are working with DWR staff for that drought water bank, but next year proves to be a pretty tough year on the onset. We'll still have a few other programs. We'll have the San Luis Obispo Program next year. We're not sure how much water that can provide, but it's probably good for the public to think and to know that this is a drought. Long-range weather projections I just saw this morning are looking like a cooler and drier winter this next year, particularly for Southern and Central California. Northern California perhaps lending towards a little bit more normal, but, you know, take long-term weather predictions as you will, but nobody's saying that we're going to have a wet year, we're going to be out of this drought.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I wonder if I could make two points, if it's appropriate at this time?
Absolutely.
I wanted to try to integrate some of the information that Mr. Nafley included in that when you look at Santa Barbara County, we're in a little bit different situation than in many parts of the state, and that situation is to our advantage. State water is a portion of our water supply, and actually, not a majority of our water supply. I think the graphic that Mr. Nafley showed earlier on the south coast state water, Kachuma Project supplies about eighty percent of the south coast water supply. Kachuma has proven to be a very reliable water supply source. When state water supplies get in shortage, we can turn to other local sources. We can draw on our surface water reservoirs higher. Groundwater, for instance, in Santa Maria, if Santa Maria receives shortages, they have a huge groundwater basin that they can draw on. You compare that with other areas of California, like the Los Angeles or even worse, San Diego areas, ninety percent of their water is imported, and they are reliant on imported water, and Santa Barbara County is not, I would not say rely, reliant on imported water, but benefits from imported water when it's available. The other point I also wanted to make for your commission and the public is, a few years ago, the Water Agency produced a report called Water Resources of Santa Barbara County that's available online and has a lot of information about our different water supplies and the groundwater basins, and there's also groundwater reports that are published on our website as well. And if your commission would like to look at those materials, if you'd like a hard copy, I'd be happy to provide one to you, okay? And the groundwater reports as well, and that gives a good indication of, you know, some of the local water supplies that we have. You can also see the local Kachuma storage. I think it's in the news press, and it's online as well, and you can track that as well. It should be also noticed, Kachuma spilled this last year, partially in thanks to the Zaca fire, but our Kachuma water supply outlook is very good right now, and we'll actually benefit now from the impacts of the Zaca fire for years to come, because we will get increased runoff from that, from that fire area. I want to make those two points.
I just wanted to comment to you that I have monitored that and the economic forecast every day for ten years.
One other question I had is that we have releases on a steady basis for Steelhead rejuvenation, I guess. In the event that we see the type of curtailment or the type of continuation of the type of drought activity that we see, does that go on indefinitely anyway, or how does that, how is that impacted by the supply problems?
Mr. Chair, I think that's a question that perhaps we could discuss further with your commission if you wanted. I'd like to get a representative from the Kachuma Operation Maintenance Board to specifically address that, but let me take a real rough shot at it. The fish account water that Mr. Nafley referred to, the ninety-two hundred acre feet that is in that surcharge part of the lake, was filled this year. So there, we have many years of water for that release that are dedicated for that. The question is, when that water runs out, do they still have to continue making some release out of project water? And I think, under certain conditions, the answer is yes. However, if the lake fills and spills, it resets everything again, so that would only occur down a prolonged drought situation, and then even at that point, I'm not sure to what extent they have to make those releases, but that's generally how it works.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you. This is very helpful, and I'm thinking back to the several projects we've approved over recent years, which have as the water source the Golden State Water Company. And I've never really understood exactly what the relationship of that entity is to the city of Santa Maria and the sixteen thousand two hundred acre feet in Table A that the city of Santa Maria is entitled to, assuming a hundred percent allocation. So who's in the best position to talk about that and its relationship, in particular, to projects in the Santa Maria area but outside the specific city of Santa Maria?
Perhaps I could take a shot at the first part of that, and that's the water supply aspect. Golden State Water Company is a separate project participant with Central Coast Water Authority, and they have a Table A amount of five hundred acre feet per year. They have their own turnout, their own connection to the state water project, and that takes water into the Tanglewood area. Additionally, they have an agreement with the city of Santa Maria to wheel some of their state project water through Santa Maria's system and into their own system. So they fully utilize their share of state project water nearly every single year. Santa Maria is, once again, a separate project participant with Central Coast Water Authority. Their sixteen thousand two hundred acre feet is administered according to their own agreements with, within the city. And I don't know if you want to take that from their matter.
I don't have any additional knowledge.
Well, right around what I'm concerned about, which is, the project water source would designate Golden State Water Company as its source of water. We don't hear or learn about where Golden State gets that water. Some of it comes from its...
of it comes from its allocation, to be sure, but if that's used up, and it sounds like there are already calls on all of its water. So it turns around and goes out into the market wherever it can find it and purchases more water for the purpose of reselling to project developers?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Cooney, and I think maybe Diane can help me with this, but this is how it basically works. Golden State, I don't believe necessarily goes out and gets the water as much as a developer does. A developer has to go out and secure that water through whatever source they can secure it. Often, that is the city of Santa Maria. It might be, I'm trying to remember if there were other entities that have come through. The city of Santa Maria, of course, geographically, and they share the same groundwater basin, would perhaps be the logical one that they would use, using a combination of state water and then being able to use their banked groundwater in the absence of state water delivery. So I believe that's how those have worked. Did I come close, Diane?
Well, it seems to me we need to ask the question, when there's a large call on water for a significant development, we need to look behind the stated source to determine exactly where that water is coming from, because it doesn't appear that Golden State's CCWA allocation is sufficient to supply new projects as opposed to what they're already committed to. So I know we basically accept there's a lot of water there. Commissioner Blau has developed projects based on Santa Maria's allocation. He has a lot more direct knowledge about this, but I've always been worried about it. So I guess it's incumbent upon us to dig a little deeper.
Just make a comment. It's kind of well-known. Santa Maria bought way more state water than they ever could use, and so they're happy to sell it to you. That's something they need to do today, the truth. Between their groundwater and their allocation, what they bought for state water is more than the build-out of the city and even in annexed areas. So it's easy for them to sell some of that state water to Golden State for their projects.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Cooney, I think the situation that you're alluding to is the Watt O2 requirement for supplemental water when an applicant's proposing a project that isn't otherwise supported by current water supplies. And you're correct, Golden State has used up the water that they have available to serve new projects, the supplemental water that they have from state water, from the state water project. So what I think the situation, Tom was describing, is a situation that property owners who have no entitlement from Golden State find themselves in when they're pursuing a project. They have to find an alternative source. The most likely alternative source is the city of Santa Maria. But we've, I think, seen at least proposals for people to buy water from local cities as well. I don't know if we've actually seen one come to fruition, but we've heard them discussed. So it is something we look at carefully. This issue may, well, we expect the issue will resolve itself at some point through the whole adjudication of the Santa Maria basin, but that's not final or completed, and so we continue to operate it under Watt O2 with that provision, that new projects have to be supported by supplemental water. So it's something we're really aware of and watching.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And one other question. When developers come in the fourth district, they say they've been to Golden State or whatever their name is, and they say they have 500 acre feet of water, but the reliability factor from the state is 74% or something like that for development. So have they gotten the 500 acre feet, or did they get the 380-some feet, or which did they get?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Valencia, I think that number changes on occasion, depending on the reliability factor. The point I was trying to make is, we sort of kept the books with Golden State on Orket projects, and they've, they've essentially allocated all of that supplemental water already. So anybody who comes in now that doesn't have a can and will serve letter from, from Golden State then has to go find supplemental water through a different source.
So the prediction for next year, he said, was 59%, so they would probably go to Santa Maria and get the additional water they would need to fulfill the requirements?
You know, I don't...
You don't know how they do that?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Valencia, I'm not sure how that district deals with shorter-term supply difficulties in terms of their state water allocation, but I'm sure they have a plan.
Thank you. And I want to thank the Water Group for coming in. It's really great information.
I had one more question. One of the elements of the expense of state water is amortizing the costs of the infrastructure. Is there a foreseeable point in the future where those costs have been paid and you see a decline, or is it amortized in perpetuity?
The costs for the local facilities, those in Santa Barbara County, are amortized out through the year 2022, and those capital costs will be fully paid off. All bonds will be paid off by that time. The state water facilities are currently amortized out to the year 2035, and, which also is the end of the contract, coincidentally. So I would expect soon there would be an extension on the state water contract and new bonds to continue, in particular, for a peripheral canal. If it can be built, would extend the project and the contracts out on a statewide basis past that, but currently, 2035.
So theoretically, around 2022, there could be a necessity for some municipalities in Santa Barbara County to re-up bonds and re-acquire or reignite additional costs associated with the state water program for infrastructure?
True. They can do whatever they please at that point. Their obligation to CCWA for local facilities will be finished.
And they can continue to get water, though?
They continue to get water, and they'll pay the operational costs, the fixed and variable costs associated with our true operation.
Okay. Okay. Are there any additional questions before we wrap this one up? All right. Well, I too thank our presenters. Very informative, and I appreciate it. And I believe we are at that point where we can wrap up this meeting. Thank you very much.